Good afternoon and welcome to the Committees on Economic Development jointly with Contracts and Small Business. At this time, we ask you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this hearing of the New York City Council's Committee on Contracts, as well as Small Business and Committee on Economic Development. My name is Julie Wan. I have the privilege of chairing this committee. I would like to thank my co-chairs, Councilmember Julie Menon and the Chair of the Small Business Committee and Councilmember Amanda Farias, the Chair of Economic Development Committee, as well as the members of all three committees for coming together to hold this hearing. Today, we will examine the administration's food procurement at both homeless and humanitarian relief shelters during this unprecedented humanitarian emergency. As record asylum seekers enter New York, the city has struggled to meet people's need for accommodation and shelter. However, it is our duty and responsibility to ensure that people seeking shelter here are offered the most basic human needs such as safe and edible food. Today's discussion will focus on how contracting agencies set nutritional and food quality standards when contracting food for shelters, short-term respite centers, and over 200 emergency relief sites. We hope to hear from the administration on how providers are being held accountable and what could change in the light of city controllers revoking blanket approvals for emergency contracting. We will ask the Mayor's Office of Contract Services about procurement barriers that small minority and women-owned food businesses face in bidding for nearly $500 million spent annually on food contracts. We will examine how reporting and oversight can improve transparency regarding the $1.7 billion already spent on the humanitarian crisis. We will be asking the Mayor's Office of Food Policy about progress on its goals towards the 10-year Food Forward Plan in relation to this crisis, including how it is expanding access to regional farms and engaging small businesses in New York City. We also hope to hear from Department of Homeless Services about how it tasks resident complaints, tracks resident complaints regarding allegations of inadequate, spoiled, or culturally insensitive food, and whether there are ways to incorporate those preferences into its vendor selection process. We would also like to understand the vastness and range of pricing per shelter even if it's from the same subcontractor amongst multiple shelters throughout the city. And we want to understand the procurement process overall, since you do do competitive bidding for all of your food. And we would also like to understand the depth of subcontracting and what their requirements are for that as well. Lastly, we plan to hear from New York City Health and Hospitals regarding inconsistency of contracting and services between the food provided at traditional shelters and emergency relief sites. We also would like to know how Health and Hospitals is using its food procurement contracts to safeguard the well-being of shelter residents across the city. I want to make sure it's on the record that HPD has refused to come despite having HPD Hercs throughout the city, and they also administer food contracts through another contractor, so they still have food subcontracts within their contracts like their contract with DocGo, yet they have not provided any transparency or responsibility for how those food contracts are administered and what their requirements are since they all operate in disparate services. We hope this hearing will encourage the administration to restore integrity to the city's contracting system, and we look forward to engaging with several contracting agencies today on these important issues. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment to thank the Contracts Committee staff, Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Policy Analyst Alex Yablon, Principal Finance Analyst Nia Hyatt, as well as the Small Businesses and Economic Development Committee for all their hard work on this hearing. And I would like to thank my staff, my Chief of Staff Nick Wuloda, my Legislative Director, Isaac Blazenstein, and my Communications Director Jenna Lang for all their hard work. I would like to acknowledge the councilmembers that are here today, Councilmember Rafael Salmanca, Councilmember Kevin Riley, Councilmember Lynda Lee, and Councilmember Joanne Areola. Do we have anyone online? Okay. And I'll now turn the floor to Councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Small Businesses Committee, for her opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair Wan. It's a pleasure to be here with you today and to be doing this joint hearing along with Chair Farias. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee on Small Business. Thank you all for joining today's joint hearing to examine the role of small businesses in food procurement for shelters. I also want to thank my council colleagues, representatives from the administration, and public for being here, and members of the public who are also participating remotely. In the past two years, the city has seen a record surge in its shelter populations, driven by an ongoing housing shortage, rising rents, inflation, and a sharp increase in newly arrived asylum seekers. From the beginning, I've strongly advocated for the city government to work with small businesses in response to this challenge, particularly in the area of food procurement. This challenge also presents an opportunity to capitalize on the talent and logistical advantages that our local New York City small businesses offer. New York City's food economy is an enormous strength resource and source of pride for our city. More than 40,000 food businesses, most of which are small businesses, sustain around 500,000 jobs in the city. Many businesses source local New York foods while specializing in cuisines from around the world. For these reasons and more, they are uniquely well-equipped to provide healthy and culturally competent meals for New Yorkers in shelters, whether longtime residents or newly arrived asylum seekers. Unfortunately, shelter food standards are not always what they should be. At times, residents of shelters across the city have been served food that is spoiled, nutritionally or medically inappropriate, or raw. Many migrant children have difficulty adjusting to the food in shelters, which has led to nausea, vomiting, and other gastrointestinal issues. Some have even had to be hospitalized. Yet, when agencies have partnered with local community-based organizations and businesses, it's led to positive outcomes for shelter residents while also supporting the local economy. For example, the city's humanitarian emergency response and relief centers have partnered with Rethink Food, an organization whose mission involves connecting community-based organizations with local food sector businesses. Successful partnerships like this send a strong message of highlighting and empowering our small business community while also benefiting the New York City economy. These partnerships also help to advance the city's legal commitments and policy goals. For example, local law 50 of 2011 requires city agencies where practicable to prioritize New York State food products in their purchasing decisions in order to supply New Yorkers with fresh, healthy, sustainably-produced, and transported food. Accordingly, the Mayor's Office of Food Procurement oversees a good-food purchasing program, which guides city agencies toward food procurement contracts that support the local economy, advance environmentally sustainable food procurement, and uphold workers' rights. The 10-year Food Policy Plan, Food Forward NYC, also sets a number of goals to support local food businesses. These goals include increasing the city's share of food purchased from local or regional sources and making city food procurement and bid processes more accessible. I look forward to hearing the testimony from the administration about the prospects for working with New York City's talented small business community to provide high-quality food while supporting and growing our local economy. I similarly look forward to hearing from the small business community and all members of the public about opportunities they see for improving the city's food procurement processes for New Yorkers. Before I thank our staff involved, I want to echo the comments that were made by Chair Wan about HPD's absence. It's honestly pretty shocking considering what we're trying to do in this hearing is to get to the bottom of what the city is spending on these contracts, and to not have HPD here completely subverts what we're trying to do. These are the very basic questions that the council has every right to be able to ask, that the public has every right to be able to know, and when an agency refuses to show up, it's really unconscionable. Finally, before we begin, I want to thank Rebecca Barilla and Jessica Boullet from Central Staff for their hard work putting this hearing together, as well as my Chief of Staff Jonathan Shutt, my Legislative Director Brandon Jordan, and Legislative A John Mendez for their assistance. Thank you also to the staff for Contracts and Economic Development Committee for their hard work on this hearing. And I'll now turn the floor over to my colleague, Councilmember Amanda Farias.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairs Menon and Wan. Good afternoon. I am Amanda Farias, Chair of the Committee on Economic Development. Our committee is called today's hearing to discuss how the administration can ensure city food contractors reliably provide quality food at the city's homeless and migrant shelters. If the administration cannot guarantee its vendors are providing safe and edible food, the most basic of human needs, then we encourage the administration to find new food providers. I agree with my co-chairs that contracting with the city's many eager small businesses for shelter food contracts would likely result in a better outcome than out-of-state institutional food vendors, who may be more likely to sacrifice quality for profit and less easily tracked than our local small businesses. The administration has spent over $1.7 billion so far on the ongoing humanitarian crisis. Rather than financing food providers from halfway across the country and offering no benefit to New Yorkers, we can recover a bit of that expense in supporting local food businesses here who are clamoring for city contracts. Since the Mayor's Office of Food Policy is aligned in these goals and offering testimony at today's hearing, I am eager to hear how we can work together on this issue going forward. We look forward to discussing how MOFP is envisioning ways to connect needs associated with this crisis and to relieve for those in need and an opportunity for small city vendors in the future, as well as how we can engage with our current vendors to ensure consistency and reliability while the asylum crisis continues. Since we have the Office of Food Policy here, we would also like to discuss a bill in the Economic Development Committee. Introduction Number 964, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the Office of Food Policy to develop a winterization plan to ready farmers' markets to provide fresh regional produce so they can continue serving customers during the colder months. This could involve infrastructure improvements to withstand winter weather, adjustments to food offerings that account for seasonal crop availability, and promotional efforts to drive winter demand. Winter doesn't mean, doesn't have to mean scarcity if we tap into our signature New York resilience. So today, we'll briefly discuss the logistics of keeping farmers' markets open year-round as a boost for local communities and public health. I do want to be associated with the comments by both councilmembers, Wan and Menon, and I don't need to belabor the point of HPD's absence here. So before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Economic Development Committee staff, Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hongech, and Financial Analyst Glenn Martzaloni, as well as the staff of the Small Business and Contracts Committees for all their hard work on this hearing. With that said, I will now turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Will all members of the administration please raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you all. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Wan, Chair Farias, Chair Menon, and members of the Committee on Contracts, Economic Development, and Small Business. My name is Kate McKenzie, and I'm the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Food Policy. Joining me today are my colleagues from the Department of Social Services, particularly Homeless Services, the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprises, and NYC Health and Hospitals. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about the city's efforts to equitably provide nourishing meals to asylum seekers, as well as individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and how various agencies are utilizing local small businesses, in particular, minority and women business enterprises, in doing so. To start, I'd like to explain the role that MOFP has played in the provision of food through the hotels functioning as shelters, as well as the asylum seeker emergency sites. As a Mayor's Office, we advise agencies on the strongest program considerations and practices that achieve the administration's goals related to food policy. As such, we encouraged adherence to the city's food standards, prioritization of cultural food options, equity, and reporting requirements of Executive Order 8. That is, the types of meal provision we offer should model existing program provisions to the greatest degree possible. For example, in our traditional shelter system, three meals a day are provided with the requirement that one meal is a hot meal. It was important to keep that requirement to maintain a standard service, as well as adherence to our updated food standards and ensuring that vendors submit menus for review. In addition to providing nutrition and meal service guidance, MOFP worked closely with my colleagues here, MN, we have a lot of acronyms, Mayor's Office of Minority and Women Business Enterprises, the Small Business Services, and MOCs, to identify and maximize small business opportunities for meal provision. This required getting very clear on the services needed so an appropriate scope of work could be identified for the request for proposal that H&amp;H developed. Specifically, that means preparing breakfast, lunch, and dinner that meet those food and nutrition standards, packaging them, and transporting them to the various sites. Given that scope, businesses that could complete the work could be considered. For the hotels serving as shelters for asylum seekers, the Department of Homeless Services leveraged its existing contracts with vendors who provide meals, and notably, two of the three prime vendors are MNWBE certified. Under the leadership of Mayor Adams and First Deputy Mayor Wright, the MNWBE office has taken several proactive steps to increase participation amongst MNWBE businesses. These include weekly meetings at City Hall with agencies involved in food and other procurements for asylum seekers. The objectives of these meetings is to review upcoming procurements to ensure that MNWBE contracts are being maximized, whether as prime or as subcontractors. The mayor also issued Executive Order 34, which strengthened MNWBE utilization of emergency contracts. Additionally, in collaboration with MOFP, HPD, H&amp;H, DHS, MOCs, and SBS, my colleagues at the Mayor's Office of MNWBE hosted an outreach event to introduce prime vendors to MNWBE vendors. This effort resulted in subcontracting opportunities for MNWBEs. When H&amp;H issued its most recent food procurement in September, my office posted that opportunity on our website and through our networks. Additionally, on October 2nd, my office co-hosted an opportunity room on food procurement at the largest-ever annual citywide MNWBE procurement fair at the Barclays Center. We shared a calendar of agency food RFPs with vendors, the food and meal requirements in the New York City food standards, and the data requirements that Executive Order 8 of 2022 require. MOFP created materials for businesses to understand the city's food need and requested feedback from those MNWBEs and their experiences in doing business with the city so that we can constantly be learning. While health, nutrition, and equity are important values that we are committed to advance through food, so is a thriving food economy and supporting the diversity of food businesses across the five boroughs. MOFP released a report to outline recommendations to support more MNWBE businesses with city contracts. As noted, my colleagues here from the Office of MNWBE convened that weekly meeting for agency chief contracting officers and their teams to ensure that we are maximizing MNWBEs across all procurements, including food where there's substantial MNWBE vendor availability and capacity. To that end, I am pleased to share the MNWBE utilization within asylum seeker food contracts. As of November 30th, the total value of prime food contracts for asylum seeker operations is more than $463 million. Of this amount, more than $284 million was awarded to MNWBEs, achieving a record-breaking 61% MNWBE utilization rate. In particular, I'd like to highlight Rethink Food, a nonprofit organization that has partnered with 12 restaurants and small businesses as subcontractors. Another vendor, Commissary, an MNWBE business, has offered 150 staff members, has over 150 staff members. It is 98% minority-employed and 100% staffed by local talent. While the figures and examples I mentioned reflect direct contracts, we know that MNWBE participation is significantly greater when considering the subcontractors associated with other food-related procurements. For example, DHS is working with Witsen's to bring in new MNWBE subcontractors, and HPD is doing the same with its prime vendor for asylum seeker work. Also, as you know, due to the complexity of human service contracts, the Office of MNWBE and agencies are working hard to have better line of sight into the myriad of MNWBE subcontracts performing food and meal provision for both asylum seekers, as well as in agency standard practices. And I just want to remind us all that due to local law, both emergency and human service contracts are exempt from MNWBE goals. Despite these exemptions, our collaborative efforts with city agencies involved in food procurement for asylum seekers have resulted in the remarkable success that I've described in promoting MNWBE participation. This achievement reflects the city's unwavering commitment to ensuring that small businesses, especially MNWBEs, fully participate in the procurement of food for asylum seekers. The city has served the more than 150,000 asylum seekers who have come through our system since last spring, but with hundreds of people arriving daily, 74,200 migrants still currently in the city's care, New York City is left responding to this humanitarian crisis without the level of support needed from other levels of government to manage this national crisis. We have undertaken substantial efforts to ensure culturally-responsive, healthy, and equitable food service provision across all sites, including across all types of asylum seeker emergency sites. In reference to Councilmember Farias, what you have described with Intro 964, that would require the Mayor's Office of Food Policy to develop and implement a plan to prepare farmers' markets in the city for use in winter weather. Farmers' markets are essential to New York City, and the administration supports their growth and viability in a myriad of ways. However, we question the need for a winterization plan. Grow NYC and other market operators have managed winters for more than 50 years. At this point, we do not offer support for this legislation, and would like to engage with the council to understand more about the desired impact and utilization of that plan. I'd sincerely like to thank the council for its leadership and its partnership in addressing and improving food access in our city. From ensuring emergency food resources, to expanding food education in our schools, addressing diet-related diseases, and building out infrastructure across the city, including at Hunts Point and in other food hubs throughout the boroughs, we value your commitments to advancing Food Forward NYC, our 10-year food policy plan. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to address questions or concerns that you may have, and will welcome my colleagues from the administration as well.
Thank you so much. I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Darlene Mealy, Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez, Councilmember Gail Brewer, Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, and we will move on to the questions. We wanted to make sure, it's good to hear the stats that you have for MNWBEs being administered through the current migrant shelter crisis. I want to give an example of an MNWBE that we have many complaints about, that have been in the news for many years, even before the migrant crisis began, Regina's Caterers. I was trying to open all of the food that we received yesterday from a local resident in the shelters. In my district, I have more than 8,000 migrants living in the temporary shelters, a combination of H&amp;H Hercs, as well as DHS migrant shelters, and we have OEM respite center, and I also have HPD Hercs as well. This is an example of the food that we have received from a migrant neighbor who gave us what is given to them on a daily basis, and there is no refrigeration for Regina's Caterers' food. So that's the first issue. Again, I repeat, this food is laid out on a table in the dining area of the hotel in Long Island City, and there is no refrigeration for all three meals that are laid out on the table. And when I opened one, my colleagues asked me to stop opening them because of the rancid smell. And we've seen in the news, as well as from our own individual constituent complaints of spoiled and rotten food, raw food, as well as inedible food, we have gotten calls from hospitals, nurses, doctors, school nurses, teachers, and principals, as well as parents, about the food quality, especially in children who are malnourished, having rapid weight loss, and are getting sick from the food. We have raised this with the administration multiple times now about our concerns about Regina's Caterers, yet you continue to have no oversight or accountability, and they continue to administer the same kind of food that both regular homeless shelter residents and migrants have now raised as inedible. So now I'm gonna turn to questioning for the Mayor's Office of Contracts. So as you just heard, we have shelter residents for migrants at H&amp;H, we also have HPD's Hercs, and we have our OEM respite centers. Now, we have the re-ticketing centers that we've been getting food questions about, as well as the DHS shelters. So can you help me understand how MOCs works with all of these agencies to have standardization in these contracts of what is required and what is expected for the food quality, for it to be a well-balanced meal, and what the cost difference is, why there are so many cost differences for every single shelter?
Thank you, Chair Wan, and thank you, Council. Taking your question that you gave, in terms of the different contracts at play for the emergency crisis, as I've testified before, there are some that are explicit emergency contracts, and then there are what we would not call a formal emergency contract that is done simply in response to the emergency. And finally, as Executive Director McKenzie already testified, too, there's a leveraging of existing contracts. So in the space of leveraging the existing contracts, those terms, and I think we were talking about DHS using their existing vendors and going beyond, those are going to utilize those terms that were negotiated at that time, presumptively, or some basis of that. Whereas if you're starting with a brand-new vendor, you would be negotiating presumptively from scratch. So MOCs' role when it comes to non-emergency contracts, MOCs has an approval role, and will be going through and ensuring that agencies are complying with the procurement rules. When it comes to the good food standards and the various work with Mayor's Office of Food Policy, we work very closely with their office to educate agencies about their responsibilities, about what they have to have in their contracts, about what they need to ensure that their vendors are educated about. So that includes presentations to agencies, working with agencies to distribute materials. When it comes to the emergency contracts, as you know, Chair, MOCs does not have a formal approval role. However, we work very closely, less in our traditional oversight role, more in our service role, of trying to connect agencies, much as Executive Director McKenzie was just speaking of, with the various resources that can help them. So, working with the Mayor's Office of MNWBEs, encouraging various events in which we can introduce MNWBEs and small businesses to primes who might be able to utilize them, who might be able to improve outcomes. But then, as you know, also, when it comes to our MNWBEs, our small businesses, these barriers to entry that prevent them from even competing, under this administration, MOCs has taken a much different path of going and meeting vendors where they are and trying to break down those barriers so that these businesses can compete. Just to give you some kind of brief overview, we're talking about, in terms of borough-based in-person trainings, over 11 workshops held, almost 300 attendees. In terms of live educational webinars, over 18 training sessions, we've had 4,500 attendees who are coming in. These are vendors who do not know the system, who have not been filed or registered before, who are now engaging with the system and are now able to compete. So in that sense, even though we don't have an approval process with emergency contracts, we're constantly trying to connect and educate the vendor community so that they're able to effectively compete. There's not the technological barriers, there's not the somewhat emotional barriers of just being confused by city contracting. So through going out there, that's where we see a lot of our success in terms of connecting agencies with those vendors.
For non-existing contracts, for non-emergency contracts, for existing contracts, for every single agency, can you lay out what the requirements are for food?
Oh, it would depend specifically on the contract, Chair. I wouldn't be able to say explicitly what would be required in each contract.
So you have no standardization for food procurement across the city agencies?
I wouldn't say that, no. I would say that the good food standards and the way that agencies are required to put in their solicitation, those standards exist. However, the analysis, it's not going to be set for one contract exactly what it says for food, then for another contract. And so in terms of the solicitation, I guess I would take, the solicitation is where MOCs is engaging with agencies and saying, you need to have the standards that we work with food policy on in your solicitation to make sure vendors understand that, the data and reporting to make sure that they understand that. So in that sense, you know, vendor must be responsive to that solicitation, so that is a requirement. They're gonna be, they are, they must adhere to that in order to effectively compete for the contract. But I would say that individual contracts will have different requirements beyond that, that I wouldn't be able to say it's explicitly this across all the contracts. In terms of the good food standards, those are applicable to any contract that is within its scope and would be applied. So those standards certainly exist, but to your question of what would be required of a food vendor on a contract-by-contract basis, is of a food vendor on a contract-by-contract basis, it's going to depend on that.
Can you expand on the Good Food Policy for each contract that everyone has to adhere by for food? Because we're seeing a food that clearly is not good.
I'm happy to respond to that, actually. Thank you for the question. Mayor Adams, in February, excuse me, April of 2022, signed Executive Order 8 that requires reporting. And what that means is that for every new contract entered after April 2022, we provide Excel templates and all of the things that we want, that we require, from the point of where is this food packaged, where is it processed, where do the ingredients come from, all the way back to the level of the farm. That gives us the line of sight and data visibility into the food that we're buying, right? So that is required across all contracts that are newly entered. With that data, we then analyze it, and I'll save that for a separate hearing to discuss because I would love to do that. But we require reporting, we require strict adherence to our nutrition and meal standards. So those also, I'm happy to provide a briefing around, but those are both for food and meal served and purchased by the city. So in the instance that you're providing here, you know, we welcome, and part of the new food standards is actually hearing from customers, our customers across all city agencies, feedback about the meals. We require that now, whereas we've never done that before. So there's an intentionality about getting this feedback, but we should be doing that at all points in time. So with what you've raised to the surface today, we certainly, I know my colleagues, but DHS will respond as well, take that very seriously, and we'll track that down. The other thing I will just say is that we have an enhanced focus on cultural and ethnic relevance within meals. And so I know, again, for all of the new procurements that H&amp;H has offered, you've seen that in the schools as well, we're really striving to make sure that the variety of cultures that we experience in New York City are reflected in the meals that we serve.
With the influx of West African migrants, there has been a higher request for halal meals, and how is that being administered in H&amp;H and the other shelters outside of H&amp;H? So for DHS, OEM, for the Welcome Centers, the re-ticketing centers, as well as HPD?
Sure. So, and again, I think our experiences over the course of the COVID pandemic really helped to bring this issue and this need in sharp resolution for us. I don't know, Ted, if you want to speak to that from H&amp;H's perspective?
Yeah, that's a great question. It makes me remember back to October of 2022. So initially, when we were starting to provide food for asylum seekers, the vast majority of asylum seekers were coming from South America, Venezuela, Colombia, Ecuador. There was a time, and I believe it was in October of 2022, where we had our first large group of West African asylum seekers or migrants that came to our site at Randall's Island at that point. So I remember it was, literally happened in an afternoon. That afternoon, at our H&amp;H site there, we brought in a food truck to be able to provide halal food, so that as soon as they entered, they would automatically have food that was culturally responsive and relevant for them. That was day one. Day two to today, we've made 100% of our food halal at all of our H&amp;H humanitarian centers and Arrival Center, so that anybody coming from West Africa, including where we're seeing people from Senegal, Mauritania, they can rest assured that any food in front of them is halal.
What is happening at DHS and the other sites?
Feel free to respond to that.
Thank you. At DHS, all our contracts are written to include religious-sensitive foods as well as dietary needs. So as clients come into our shelters, they express a need for a specialized meal, related to that, we provide it.
Can you help me understand what avenues, especially migrants who don't speak English and do not have working cell phones, have to report when they are being fed spoiled food other than showing up at my office?
Ted, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll start, again, from the point of view of H&amp;H, and then my colleagues can add on. So what we've done at H&amp;H to help give asylum seekers an opportunity to give us feedback is we've proactively done surveys of them so that they can rate each individual meal. We've done door knocking to make sure that people have a chance to be able to weigh in, and that's enabled us at H&amp;H to not only get feedback, and I should also say, the way that we distribute food, we have a point person for receiving feedback. So as we receive feedback, or as people literally vote on the individual meals to see which ones they'd prefer to have more or less of, enables us to make sure that we're being responsive so that we could tailor meals to everybody at our sites. One challenge, just to put it out there, is of course, it's hard to have a single meal that might be appealing to somebody from the Ukraine, from Venezuela, and from Senegal. And if you asked me what meal I would give to people from all those places, I wouldn't know what to say. So we did the only thing we could do, which is, again, have people from every country coming to us, which is now tens, hundreds of countries, tell us what they want. And through that voting, it turns out that there are actually some pretty common themes. For example, I think I've shared this before, but it seems that from across the world, nobody likes roast beef, which I don't like it either, so we've taken that off the menu. But also in doing this, it's enabled us, which has informed our overall efforts, to figure out what meals people do like. And it turns out our most highly-rated meal from people from Senegal to Venezuela is Italian food. So as we've gone forward, we continue to do things like that, and that gives us more information from, literally from the people that we're serving, about what their priorities might be that we can meet as a city.
The largest complaints that I get are from DHS shelters. What avenues are you providing for your shelter residents to give feedback on the food?
Thank you. At DHS, you know, we utilize Language Access Program to help communicate, first of all. So that's where we get information from the clients and understand exactly what their needs are. We do go out and sample, get sampling of the food, make sure it meets the food standards as well as the menus that are provided, that are pre-approved by our nutritionists, to make sure that they're in compliance with the New York City food standards. This month, we are looking to start implementing, as we said earlier, client surveys, so we can better understand their needs and, you know, look to make adjustments in the future. It is a pilot, and, you know, we're hoping to, you know...
So currently, there is no avenue for them to provide feedback? There are no current surveys being administered in the DHS shelters?
The surveys will stop being implemented by the end of the month.
By when?
The end of the month, end of this month.
So we'll continue to follow up on that? Yes?
Just to draw it, I think, to emphasize, you know, I think what we've done at H&amp;H, the surveys we've done, has helped to inform, you know, our city partners about being able to take this sort of approach, and even inform specific meals that people could also, that we could share across our sites. And I also just wanted to emphasize, the one thing we talk a lot about with DHS is that we all have certain standards that cut across, like our New York City Healthy Food Standards, which we implement the same way that DHS does as well. So it enables, you know, me as a primary care doctor to know that we are all thinking about what's best for our children.
Can you help me understand why there are so many different price caps for food spending across all the agencies? And then, for example, in DHS, why there is such a wide range of food caps per day, or for the per diem, for three meals per day, ranging anywhere from $3 to $3 up to $15? Can you help me understand that difference in all the prices?
Chair Wan, from Mox's perspective, of course, when it comes to the negotiated terms, the quality of the kind of business decisions that the agencies are making, those are all going to be dependent on the negotiating stance that those agencies face. So the procurement rules are not going to speak to the issue that you raise, it's going to be a question of what the agencies need and how they get it. When it comes to, specifically to emergencies, I would note, we often, when an agency comes up with an emergency need, one of the first things that they're recommended to do is go to speak to any other agency that is procuring something similar, and try and find out what their prices are, and to try and match them and use those terms if you can. It's not always possible. So the procurement rules and the procurement process will not speak to that process, it will be dependent on what the agency needs at that time, what they negotiate for, so it's not specifically...
So can you help me understand why, for example, a provider in my district, ICL, has three shelters, and at all three shelters, they administer Regina's Caterers? And this is separate from the one that I got this food from. Why does ICL have three separate food contracts with Regina's Caterers, where one is a different price point from the next, and the price point fluctuates for all three meals per day? Why is that?
So I really can't speak to that, Chair Wan. I'd have to defer to the contracting agency as to what contracts you're referring to.
So, yeah, sorry. Thank you. So the primary contracts, as you know, are with the human service providers. They then undergo a competitive bidding process. We, from the MWBE team side, per the Executive Order 34, they're required to secure at least one bid from an MWBE as part of that solicitation. And so we resource those human service providers with lists of MWBEs, extensive lists, particularly in the food area where we're trying to push MWBE participation. I will note that we're at 35%, MWBE utilization in food for this emergency, and we think it comes out of some of the efforts that we've made to try to bridge that relationship between MWBEs and those contracting providers. That being said, each one has their own solicitation process, so we're basically trying to inform that process. First of all, there's the PBB that they need to abide by, then there are the food standards that they need to abide by. And then beyond that, there's a minimum of three bids that they need to get. Who they choose to invite to bid, I don't want to overspeak, but I don't know that we have the ability to tell them who to invite, so they may have a relationship with that.
I'm not concerned with who is bidding. What I'm asking is, why does DHS have a different price cap at different shelters, even though you're administering three meals a day? Why are you ranging anywhere from $6 or less up to $15, even if it's from the same caterer or vendor, for the same exact quality of food? So I literally have photos from all three ICL sites, where I took photos of Regina's Caterers' foods, where they're giving you the same exact breakfast, lunch, and dinner, yet you're being charged more than $6 at one, $15 at another, and $9 at another. Why is that?
Again, as was mentioned earlier, everything's done through competitive bidding, you know, so when the providers go out and solicit their three bids, you know, it's based on a competitive bidding process. Why there'll be different prices from the same caterer, I would have to get back to you, I don't have the answer for that.
So this question goes, then, brings me back to Mox, of helping, help us understand why there is no quality assurance for the food being sold or being provided for us? And secondly, why is there no standardization or oversight or accountability for one caterer that clearly is not a good actor, that has multiple complaints throughout the city about the quality of food, yet they're also charging you a very vast different amount for the same exact meal that they're administering across the city? Help me understand why that has not been addressed.
So Chair Wan, I would say certainly, you were speaking about contract management, and we're talking about once something is procured, how is it being delivered? So to that aspect, agencies are certainly required to perform their performance evaluations. Before they engage with a vendor, they're required to find them responsible. But when it comes to ensuring that product, I mean to say, is that the procurement rules do not speak to that effect. So Mox's role is certainly going to be in ensuring we maintain the vendor integrity database, and we maintain the database where people share performance evaluations. But it's going to be that feedback of something's not working, a vendor is not responsible, if that is the case, I can't speak to that. That is going to be a determination made at an agency level.
So for Mox, there is no, nothing that exists that ensures that every single agency, if they're procuring the same food from the same vendor, that we should not have 15 different price points from them?
I would say that we certainly, whenever anything like that is pointed out, would want to encourage the agencies to get the most competitive prices possible, the best prices possible. I guess what I would say is that certainly the procurement rules do not prevent such. I think whenever something like that would come up, not just Mox, but I would imagine OMB, and the various other oversights who are involved in an operational capacity beyond just the procurement rules capacity like Mox, would have concerns over that. So when we do see that, and I've seen it in my work, I have raised it to the agency of noting that there's a difference. But, and certainly when it comes to poor performance, that's an incredibly important task that agencies ensure that any poor performance is noted. So, again, I can't speak to the specific vendor or that contract, but if there is poor performance, that should be and needs to be noted in line with the procurement rules so that agencies are able to make responsible decisions.
Can you help me understand, again, I still don't feel like I'm getting the answer, why are there different price caps per contract for food?
Chair Wan, if I may, because I think you raised an important point, and I will also share that in the myriad of understandings about food procurements, what I've come to learn, let's use this example of a prime vendor. Then we have some of the shelters that are managed through nonprofits that select subcontractors to provide their food services. So as where the price for what we get as a prime contract is one thing, with economies of scale and everything else, if a nonprofit or another entity is then leveraging its subcontract, they don't quite have the economies of scale. That might provide some insight into the differences in price point, which we're, I think, in attribute and service to the work of MWBE, getting more clarity and line of sight at the hard-to-find, which are the subcontractors, right? We have clear line of sight into the prime vendors that we have for food services and food contracts, but then in the myriad of things that primes identify as subcontractors for all types of services, that's where we're pressing to know more and more so that we can achieve all of our goals, certainly across MWBE and small business spend, but of course, around things like meal quality and adherence to standards and understanding and supporting our other food policy goals as well.
For DHS, what is the highest cap that you have for food spending, for per diem per day?
I don't have that information.
What is your lowest price point for food per day?
I don't have the information on the price ranges.
Okay, we will follow up. And what is the price point for the cap for meals for H&amp;H?
So the price point for the meals that went through the RFP process that are going, they're currently going through, where we're about to, on Thursday, present a resolution to the Health Nostals Board to allow us to contract with new contracts with up to four vendors. There's a cap in the RFP, and that is for per diem, meaning three meals, a total amount of $14.40.
Okay, thank you. And we will follow up with HPD for their, Herks for their per diem per day, and we will also follow up with OEM, and we will follow up with the Welcome Centers and the Respite Centers as well, depending on who's administering them. It's great to hear about your MWBE stats. Can you tell us how many small businesses are engaged in the shelter food procurement process currently?
I'll go ahead and answer for DHS, and that is, out of 78 contracts, 37 are with MWBEs. And my preliminary numbers here looks like 51 million, a little over 51 million total value.
Okay, so for 37 MWBEs, you're saying that they're small businesses?
37 MWBE contracts, correct.
With small businesses, not just large caterers?
I can't speak to the character of the businesses, I don't have that data in terms of how large the organizations are, but they are certified MWBEs on the online directory.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Julie Menon, Councilmember Menon, to continue questioning.
Thank you so much, Chair Wan. I really want to build upon what Chair Wan was asking you. It's kind of incredible testimony today to hear that there are these very disparate price points across various agencies. Right now, the administration is asking us to accept cuts to education, sanitation, and critical services, and yet the administration has a system where you have various agencies using different price points. Why isn't the City of New York harnessing its purchasing power on these contracts to drive the price down?
Chair, I'll start, if I may, just holistically. I think, as I've testified before, in the emergency setting, I think, when we talk about the system, agencies have various options of what they can use. And as we've said in this emergency, we've encouraged them to use every tool in the toolbox, and various different things. So for example, leveraging existing contracts will allow you to get a price that you likely negotiated in a less stressful environment, in an environment that was better for you. So sometimes being able to leverage those will give you one price. And then on the other side, leveraging intergovernmental contracts, as happened with Garner, for example. That was a contract that was leveraging not just the city's purchasing power, but really the purchasing power that the federal government was able to negotiate with that company, and then we're able to kind of piggyback off of. So in other instances, the agencies have determined that they have to make one-off procurements for whatever operational needs they may. So I would say that there are different tools that have been used that will reflect different prices. I can say that holistically encouraging agencies to be constantly reevaluating the prices that they got, especially during an emergency situation, is active city policy and...
Let me just interrupt you. Has the administration had, and can you provide to our committee? Has the administration had, and can you provide to our committees, any correspondence, any email, any directive from the administration to city agencies to harness their purchasing power to drive down the price of these contracts?
Well, I certainly can't speak for all aspects of the administration. I couldn't tell you that for myself, I mean, even as recently as August seventeenth, I personally hosted a training for agency personnel in which that was on the slides of saying, utilize other agency contracts, intergovernmental master contracts. Over three hundred agency personnel attended that training. So I can speak from, purely from the office that I work for, but that is something that we have actively provided guidance to agencies as recently as August seventeenth.
I can give an example of how we've worked to harness our purchasing power to drive down costs, too. So when we started with our humanitarian centers, we had two. There was the Row Hotel, and there was Randall's Island the first time we set up there. At that time, we had to move at emergency speed, so we really did not have time to go through the formal RFP process, which is the best way to competitively lower costs. So when you're moving at emergency speed, we have a standard operating procedure for emergency contracts. But oftentimes, of course, if you're moving that fast, you aren't able to get the best possible rate. And we've, over time, been able to dramatically reduce the amounts that we're spending per diem or for three meals a day per person in our humanitarian centers. And now we're spending the lowest amount that we've spent to date, driven by the RFP process that we're just completing now. And in terms of purchasing power, at my H&amp;H sites, we provide more than four hundred and thirty thousand meals a week. That's a pretty big number. So leveraging that purchasing power and the RFP process where people had to bid up to a cap, meaning a maximum of fourteen dollars and forty cents, has enabled us to, I think, you know, from, from the humanitarian center standpoint, to see how much lower we could bring down costs with the magnitude of meals we're, we're offering each day, or each week, rather.
You mentioned the fourteen dollars and forty cents per diem. How does that compare to other agencies? I know that, I mean, but you need to be able to answer, I mean, this is a hearing on this issue, so you all need to be able to answer this very rudimentary question.
I, I, I am not familiar with the DHS numbers, but what I will just add some additional color to is that fourteen dollars and forty cents or any of the, the cost per meal is a cost fully loaded. So what that means is the cost of the food, the preparation of that food, the packaging, and the distribution. So just to be clear, it's, it's all of those items. And I defer to DHS to speak to the cost of meals that they're providing.
If I could just jump in quickly before that, just to clarify, so the fourteen dollars and forty cents, which is in the RFP, is the cap. Right now, we don't have the new contracts from the RFP yet. It still has to go to my board on Thursday. So we're in the contract negotiation, negotiation stage right now with the vendors that we would have contracts with if the resolution is approved by our board on Thursday. But fourteen forty is not necessarily the amount that we'll pay. That's the maximum per day, per person for three meals that we put in the RFP that people bid for. Just wanted to clarify.
So the information that we would like to get is for every agency that is dealing with food contracts in the shelter system, what is the amount of the per diem? That's like the first piece of information we want to get. Secondly, I want to go back to the beginning of the asylum seeker crisis and understand, did the administration across any agency, and I guess it's probably best directed to you, what were the food contracts that the administration entered into? Were they all no bid, if you could specify? And where were these businesses located, i.e., were they out of state?
Sure. What I, what I recall from those times are that, once again, recalling on the, the COVID contracts that actually H&amp;H was managing, we were able to leverage a contract with, with LIC Commissary as an example. And once again, leveraging the contracts, there was no procurement until September, when H&amp;H issued its, its RFP for HERC, Humanitarian Emergency Respite and Response Center meals. So we were issuing procurement specifically by leveraging the DHS service provisions.
So did any city funds, but let me, let me ask it a different way then. Did any city funds through the beginning of the asylum seeker crisis to today go to any company located out of state for food?
I am not familiar with the details of the, the addresses of the, of the vendors, but that is something we can certainly come back to.
This is a really important question, because as you know, I've been very vocal, I wrote to the mayor a year ago urging that instead of utilizing these large-scale catering companies, which I believe some were located out of state, that instead, yeah, we heard they were located in Texas and other states, instead to utilize our small businesses here in the city to provide the food. So again, the question is, were, did the administration or any of these contracts negotiated with companies and implemented that were out of state? That's what I'm, we're really trying to get at.
So thank you so much for the question, and appreciate the focus. We'll certainly get back to you on numbers, certainly get back to you on out-of-state vendors. Those are two questions that I just heard from you. I will say for, for us, local spend is incredibly important. So the lists of MWBEs that we're providing to our human service providers are actually sorted by zip code so that they can find the, either restaurants, or handyman, or security, or whatever other businesses they're looking for to support their work that are near them, so that we can promote that local spend. And then to the question about competition, just wanted to, after conferring with my colleague, my understanding is that any number of emergency, the emergency nature of a procurement, the number of respondents to a bid solicitor, a solicitation or RFP, and whether it's an existing contract or a human service provider contract, all of those things can influence what the end price is. And to the degree that they're solicited by the human service providers, we're providing guidance and we're providing oversight, but we're not involved in their bid processes. So the numbers can, can vary depending upon their bid process and their internal bid.
But I just, it, it's confounding. You must have a list of contracts that have been entered into since the beginning of this crisis. I mean, this has to exist, this list.
I can, just to jump in, so speaking, of course, from the H&amp;H point of view. So in terms of food contracts, since the beginning of the crisis, and we opened our first humanitarian center in October of 2022, we've had two food contracts. The first is with LIC Commissary, which is, of course, to be precise to your question, yeah, in Long Island City. And that contract was based on, in terms of our due diligence for it, on RFP that we'd conducted around COVID for similar services in 2021, where LIC Commissary was selected through that RFP process. And again, just want to emphasize, October of 2022, things were moving incredibly fast. We were working as hard as we could as a city to keep up with the volume of asylum seekers coming in, so we had to act at emergency speed with emergency contracts. And that's why at H&amp;H, where we operate eleven emergency rooms, we have a standard emergency operating procedure for acquiring contracts like this. Throughout the last year, though, as you noted earlier, we entered into a second contract with Rethink Food, again, supporting local businesses, and they actually were one of the, the winners of our evaluation process for our RFP for food contracts moving forward. So that all of the, a hundred percent of the contracts we've had for our H&amp;H humanitarian centers right now are for, from local vendors, because it's, it's those two. And then going forward, we have four that we'll be proposing on, on Thursday.
And are there any impediments? Why couldn't the administration take all of these food contracts, which, well, first of all, let me ask, is it correct that we're talking about a sum along the lines of five hundred million? What is the actual amount that the administration is spending on food procurement in the shelter system?
I again can speak just on behalf of H&amp;H, and I'll defer to my colleagues. So the data I'm about to share with you is from our Public Health and Hospitals Board Finance Committee meeting from last week. So to date, for LIC Commissary, we've paid out forty-two point five million dollars through October of 2023. For Rethink Food, eighteen point three million dollars through October of 2023. That's our spending that's been paid out to date for the two contracts.
But across every agency, what, what is the overall spend? What is the total nut?
What I mentioned, well, the, I, I can't speak to the spend to date, but we have a, like, for instance, each of those contracts has a ceiling, right, that do not go over. And the total value for prime food contracts for asylum seeker operations is roughly four hundred and sixty-three million dollars. The do not exceed, and so what my colleague Ted just explained is that's the number that's been expensed to date.
And that is across all city agencies?
Across the agencies that are serving and providing support through the asylum seeker crisis, DHS, H&amp;H, HPD.
So again, I guess this goes back to the initial line of questioning is, why can't, given the, and this is an enormous sum of money that the City of New York is spending. And so on the one hand, the mayor's saying, we're going to cut education, cut sanitation, do all of these decimating cuts, which the council has clearly pushed back on. This is an enormous amount. To bring the price down, why can't you harness a purchasing power across these agencies? You don't have agencies at different per diem price points, and you could drive the price down.
I love the question. I also know from my, those meetings that I explained that we attended, the opportunity centers, the, the meetings that we've had at City Hall, particularly with MNWBE vendors, driving down costs is not possible for all to play. We've got a lot, you know, I'm very, you know, I think I mentioned sixty-three percent utilization in MNWBEs. Not all of them can hit the lowest price point. So whereas I think Ted's language, right, of the do not exceed number is important, but driving the race to the bottom is perhaps not the only way to reach those, the, the cheapest prices for all to participate in contracts.
Of all of the food contracts that the administration entered into since the beginning of the asylum seeker crisis, what percentage and what is a dollar amount that were no bid as opposed to three competitive bids?
I don't have that information right now.
We utilized our existing contracts that were in place prior to the crisis, so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, my voice is a little hoarse. No, we utilized the, our three contracts that we utilized were in place prior to the crisis, and that's what we continue to use.
So you, so they were three competitive bids? These were pre-existing competitively bid?
Pre-existing competitive bids through an RFP process and awarded prior to the crisis.
And I will add to that, that we are also looking, again, with our support from MNW, Mayor's Office of MNWBEs, at pressing on those prime vendors to maximize new subcontractors in those agreements. And so for instance, Whitson's is one that I believe has just entered into some, some new and, and exciting small business MNWBE subcontract with that prime that was awarded competitively several years ago.
Okay, I have actually many more questions, but I want to turn it over to our co-chair, Chair Ferias.
Before we turn it over, I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Aviles, Councilmember Brooks-Powers, and Councilmember Vernikov has also joined us.
Thank you, chairs. I'm, I'm kind of at a, at a loss right now. I feel incredibly frustrated with some of the responses that we're getting, or some of the lack of information that's been brought to the hearing. I just want to go back just so I can get some clarity and hopefully maybe ask it differently or understand that we, we do not have these things. Do we have a list of set mandatory food quality standards?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that list available right now for us to see that over every contract, the list of the quality food standards are X and has to be included in every single one of the contracts despite the differences of length or type of food varying type, times a day?
We are happy to provide you that right after the hearing. It's also, the city's food standards are available on the Mayor's Office of Food Policy website, on the Health Department website, and across all city contracts.
Okay, and then in terms, and, and I have not looked at them, the, do the quality food standards explicitly say with contractors, like chicken has to be cooked at X degree?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What happens when, I know we mentioned there's like analysis of food quality of the contracts, of the types of services provided, when does the analysis and the review of complaints happen and how we move forward?
So I'm going to answer that in two parts. One, annually, in partnership with the Health Department, my office releases a report on adherence to city food standards. That will be coming out later this month, actually, on the previous fiscal year. So adherence to cities' food standards. I do want to recall that the, the new requirement specifically to require client feedback went into place this fiscal year. So next year, we'll be, we will, we'll be raising and elevating that feedback, but it just went into requirement, we're almost at the six, so for six months, it has been a requirement, and then we will report on that feedback annually. So we don't have a report to issue that feedback because the requirement is brand-new, effective in July.
And contracts are annual?
That varies. In some cases, just to recall, we've got food contracts, which are, in short, like a grocery list, I need, the Department of Education will say, we need to buy these items, right? My colleagues here are describing meals, so they need meals that meet specific requirements, including temperature controls, time, including cultural relevance, and the nutritional quality and value of that meal. So those are the meal contracts, and some of them, you know, I, I can't speak, I think, what, what's your term right now? One year, because hopefully we won't be doing this a year from now. But the asylum seeker contracts are entered in for one year. In some cases, agencies have three-year contracts. In some cases, they're one-year competitive bids. So that is the factor of, of food procurement.
Okay, so how do we then take the analysis, this report on contracts that are mid-contract or have longer period of times, do we reevaluate those contracts?
Annually.
No, I understand it's annually, but I'm saying, if I was a vendor and I have a three-year contract and you, a report came out and said, my quality standard is not meeting, is not up to par, everyone hates my food, do I then, does the city then go back into that contract and say, we're revoking this contract? Or do they get to continue presenting poor quality food for the next two years?
Yeah, for DHS, we, we have a team that goes out and constantly looks at the food, looks at, makes sure.
We understand that. We have four things of food in front of us that people do not like that are still being served.
So in the event, you know, it's raised to our attention about the quality, we will investigate, you know, the item or the issues that are going on, we will put, we'll call the vendor in, we'll express our concerns, and if necessary, we'll put them on a corrective action plan that they're required to meet. Ultimately, you want them to improve and give the best quality of service. In the event that they can't meet that standards, yes, there are clauses in the contract that they could be terminated.
How many providers have we put on?
We only have the three vendors, and we have not had, be able to put them on that. The, the, our providers, you know, they have various vendors.
Can you share the names of the three providers?
I believe it said in previous session, Whitson's, Riviera, and Dahl.
What was the last one?
It's Regina. What?
I believe the three prime are Whitson's, Regina, and Dahl, D-H-A-L.
For DHS, can you tell me how many people are in this investigation team?
There's a, a few people, primarily it's our nutritionists that works for the agency and the people that help administer the contract.
So how many people in total in the agency do this work?
I don't have the exact number.
Okay, so we'll follow up with the exact number of how many people do this work? And how often do they go out to do the investigation?
I would have to get back to you on that as well.
Okay.
It is, it does, they do go, you know, often, but I don't have the exact number.
Since you currently don't have a survey system, so how have you found out where to investigate and when?
Again, I would have to get back to you on that.
So we'll have to follow up on all these questions. Just for the record, DHS has no system or no avenue of getting feedback or reporting the food quality, and it is unclear how often these investigations are carried out. I'm going to.
One thing, if I may, before you move on, just regarding the prior question of local sourcing, of the MWBEs awarded contracts, which represented roughly two hundred and eighty-four million dollars, that represented roughly a hundred and sixty-one unique vendors, and all of those vendors are New York City-based.
Great, thank you. And just, just a couple more. In terms of compare contrasting the bids versus the, the highest point where they can't go over versus the lower bids that we have, you folks were saying that we are using some of our contracts as leverage to get lower bids or to meet standards. I just, I'd like to know, how are we compare contrasting the bids that are out there, at least from the same companies, maybe in a different agency or within the same agency, but giving us different price points for the same food standards?
Perhaps I'll start, Chair Ferias. In terms of the leveraging, just to be clear, when I mentioned leveraging, it was regarding leveraging existing contracts as opposed to entering into a brand-new.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we have an existing contract that they're giving, that we are paying eight dollars for each meal three times a day, and then they give us another bid for another contract at fifteen dollars, where is the leverage point saying, well, you actually are only getting paid eight dollars on this other contract for the same food standards? for the same length of time? Why are you then now charging us $15? We're not willing to pay that. You're not giving us the lowest bid as you did before. And unless, as a company and someone has worked in a nonprofit before this, who tried to leverage on multiple points to get the lowest cost per participant on a lot of my trainings, I understand what you're trying to leverage, but what I'm asking is, how often are we doing that in looking at these contracts that have the lowest point, that are giving us good quality, poor quality, mediocre quality food with the same vendor, and then saying, how dare you have the audacity to give us a contract bid at $15, which is almost double the amount, if you're not showing us that packaging has increased, delivery has increased, local logistics has changed the impact of how you're packaging or sourcing this food or delivering this food?
So I would just, I would turn to DSS in terms of how they analyze that, because again, it's going to be a process of what are they currently paying? And then what are the conditions upon which they are negotiating again? As we've touched upon a few times, especially when it comes to an emergency contract, you might want to say, okay, here's what you're paying me now for X amount. I need three times as much. Can I get it at the same price? And they might say, no, of course, for understandable reasons. So I'll turn to DSS if they have any specific insight into how they analyze that. But that exact question, Chair, is a very important aspect of, of emergency contracting and making sure that you are analyzing that always.
Okay, the last question I have, since there's no additional information on there. How will the controller's revocation of prior approvals for emergency procurements impact future food contracts at city shelters?
So Chair Ferris, in terms of the, as I believe Chief Counsel Zornberg said last week, and OMB Director Jiha said yesterday, the, the hope is that the disruption will be minimal. Prior approval in, in standard, so to speak, if it ever could be standard circumstances, can take one to two days, and we're hopeful that it will not impede the way we go forward. We're hopeful that the controller can, can continue to be a partner and, and approve those quickly and efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, we currently don't have emergency food contracts any longer in any of our migrant shelters. That's what I was under the impression of.
Well, at our H and H humanitarian centers, we currently do, as we're transitioning now to go, to select and go into contracting, assuming the Health and Hospitals Board approves our ability to go into contracting with the new vendors that were selected through the RFP. So just wanted to draw out that distinction.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer for questions.
Thank you. I have three questions, starting, and thank you, Dr. Long, for calling this morning. Thank you. More to be discussed, I guess. Number one is, the, I understand that health and hospitals, it doesn't have to be as transparent. Do these two food contracts that you seem to have that are emergency, do they go through PeopleSoft? And the reason I ask is, it's very hard to get those receipts. We have been trying through the Committee of Oversight and Investigations. And my question is, do you get any federal reimbursement through H and H, maybe through others also, for any of this food? Because the transparency on all contracts is poor. So how does it work for the food? You've got obviously two here, but how does that work?
Yeah, so in, thank you, Councilmember Brewer.
Yes, Dr. Long.
So, you know, going forward, actually, the, the most important thing I'll say, and then I will precisely answer your two questions there, is if there are ways that we could be more transparent, we'd love to know how we can.
Do you use PeopleSoft?
We use PeopleSoft as a, it's one of our, we use it for HR, things like that.
But not for food?
Let me double-check the extent to which if we use PeopleSoft for food. Okay. The, the way that our contracts currently are orchestrated is, is so the, the LIC Commissary, the due diligence for that was based on our 2021 RFP that we administered during COVID, and then Rethink Food, we have that as an emergency contract as well. As we transition to the new RFP-selected vendors, we're going to be entering into new contracts with them. For your question around, will there be federal reimbursement to us specifically for that? Not as far as I know, but I think there should be, so.
The reason I ask is, it's very hard through PeopleSoft, if food goes through PeopleSoft, to get the receipts that would then enable not only oversight from us, DOI, controller, but also for the feds. Nobody can get the receipts from PeopleSoft.
Dr. Long, if I could just add, PeopleSoft is a human capital management software that your team has shared that is now being used currently to process invoices, which is not what it's used for on a common sense. So that's why she's asking if you, for your food contracts that now you're embarking onto new contracts, will you be purchasing, invoicing, and making payments through PeopleSoft? And if you don't know the answer now, we will follow up for that information.
So the, two things. One, in terms of the contracts, both the existing and new contracts, for the existing ones, I know that we've shared them with council, and we're of course committed to continue to share.
We need the receipts.
Right, getting there. Any new contracts as well as we have throughout. In terms of the receipts, just to make sure that I give you, Councilmember One, a perfectly accurate answer, let me talk to my finance colleagues to make sure that I understand well enough to give you the authoritative answer there.
Okay. Two other quick questions. Number two is Riverside Terrace, this is DHS. 320 West 88th Street, Leonie has been very helpful, but just so you know, all the neighbors complained because so much food has been thrown out on a regular basis. Brand-new food, et cetera, spilled into the neighborhood, rats existed, Department of Sanitation complained to me. So my question is, we're dealing with, I know how to deal, so I know how to deal with 320 West 88th Street, but my question is, are you monitoring other sites where food could be thrown out? It's not H and H, it's DHS. What's going on? I mean, a lot of food was thrown out.
Yes, we've implemented a food discard report that's self-reporting. We're trying to evaluate that information to determine, you know, the needs of the food, especially if there is waste, we don't want to do waste.
I know, people don't want to tell you though, so how are you really monitoring it? People don't want to tell you. We had, we started ourselves, the neighbors complained, nobody from DHS complained. How are you doing undercover monitoring, if that's the word to be used?
The other thing that we're implementing, as I mentioned earlier, is we're doing satisfaction surveys, you know, to see if the food that is being provided, you know, is being, people actually eating the food. I think that's part of the, maybe part of the issue there, that there might be perceived waste. We're trying to do satisfaction surveys to help, help us, guide us in the future.
Okay, that's not the answer I want to hear. I want undercover, I want people to know more specifically. It's just, you can do all the satisfaction, people aren't going to fill those out, so, but you do need to be much more cognizant of food being wasted, okay? Number three, local sourcing. Everybody knows, that's my thing, I want the city of New York to be local sourced. So do any of these contracts, I guess there are five if you add up DHS, H and H, what are we doing, and maybe you answered this, to do local sourcing? It's not easy, I'm not going to say it's easy, but what are you doing for local sourcing for these contracts?
Well, I'll repeat again, that, on the MNWBE front, of the $284 million that was, that's been awarded in that area, which represents 161 unique vendors, all of them are local to NYC.
Yeah, I don't care about local, and I'm talking about the farm in, you know, Ulster County. I'm not interested in local. I want my black dirt farms to be purchased, the radishes, et cetera. That's what I mean, local sourcing.
Yeah.
I can jump in.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, just to be precise, so two of the contracts, the, of the aforementioned five are mine. So for LIC Commissary, they do source from local farms, specifically Maynard Farm and Orchard, Toigo Orchards, Williams Fruit Farm, Acevedo's Farm, Angel Family Farm, Konico Farm, and Gorzinski Ornery Farm are in, they, they source seasonal products from those farms. And then for Rethink Food, that's a different models, you know, so we source locally from different, from local restaurants for that model.
Okay. And how about DHS? You've got three contracts.
So speaking to those three contracts, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you what their sources are, I don't have that information currently. I can say that we have reached out to local, in particular, there are MNWBE suppliers in the world, while everybody thinks.
There are black farmers, you can take it from the black farmers, that's fine.
Exactly, and so we've had matchmaking events where we've invited those firms and then put them in one-on-ones with the providers to try to create that relationship.
Do you know if it got created or you're still trying to create it?
Well, I can't speak to the outcome of the matchmaking in terms of contracts for those specific suppliers, but I'm happy to look into it.
Could you get back to the committee with what, it has been successful or not?
Absolutely.
I have a feeling it has not, so I would love to hear about it. Thank you very much.
Happy to share.
Thank you.
We're going to turn it over to Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Chairs. And going back to where you thought Councilmember Brewer was, I do want to delve in on the MNWBE conversation, particularly what initiatives exist to provide technical assistance or streamline contracting requirements that might better enable small businesses, especially MNWBE businesses, to participate in food procurement? And also, I'm interested in knowing what outreach efforts exist to make food procurement opportunities accessible to small businesses, particularly MNWBEs? And is technical assistance offered to small business vendors to help navigate the solicitation process?
The general answer is yes. And so more specifically, as you all know, we, among the things you learned over the COVID crisis and so on, is to create matchmaking and create relationships between vendors and prime, subs and prime, so that when these opportunities come up, they are primed and ready for that. We, at the Mayor's Office of MNWBE, we are, we currently not only have weekly meetings with agency stakeholders regarding this particular crisis, on what their actual contracts are, and I'll get to the technical part in a second, on their actual upcoming contracts are, and what, if any, challenges they're having in, in reaching MNWBEs as potential partners in trying to provide services to this population. But then, you know, we, the, not just the agency, but SBS and our other partner at Mox, we, you know, we provide information in terms of technical documentation and, and training for MNWBEs on how to navigate the city's procurement system, so that they have as good as an opportunity as any other vendor to be successful on, on getting on these contracts. But again, and I say this from, you know, a couple of decades of doing this, it's the creation of the relationships that matter in the long run regarding creating successful MNWBE engagements in any, in there, whether it's a non-emergency or an emergency, and in this case, that's an ongoing activity.
If I could also add on to that, I just want to draw attention to, the first time, not the only time that we will be doing this, the, the Mayor's Office of Food Policy joined SBS and MNWBE office at the annual citywide procurement fair for MNWBEs at the Barclay Center. And these are seemingly small things, but providing the participants in that with a calendar of when city food procurements are, with those food and meal requirements, the food standards, how to achieve them, and again, those requirements, as we always strive for more and better data collection of, if you want to do business with us, we need to know this traceability into where your food is coming from. So in addition to that, you know, we've, for years, been having, DeCast hosts a, an annual food expo, but we're changing the timing of it to adhere to actually when, like, you know, DeCast starts doing procurements for correction and for administration for children's services in the summer, so we want to have that expo, like, in June, so that it's like, we know what we're going to buy, and here are people that could be entering into business with the city and tasting their, their foods and things like that. And then I'm sure Chairman Ennis is familiar with this, but the NYC Small Business Services Team has launched NYC Business Express Service Team, or BEST, the initiative to provide small businesses with one-on-one expert support and streamline the interactions with city agencies. So these are all, you know, chipping away at that effort to help make sure that, I think, the success of the work that we've done over the asylum seeker crisis permeates into traditional food services across the city.
Just a follow-up question, and what triggered it was when you started to talk about the prime vendors. How is the city working to scale up that, particularly MBEs, right? To be able to access and tap into these opportunities better? How are you creating an environment where MBEs could then become prime contracts as well? And how do you feel like you're doing along that line? Because the city, for it to be one of the most diverse cities in, in the world, quite honestly, like, we're not seeing that correlation in terms of who's getting the contracts, who's being the primes in New York City, in terms of what the participation numbers are. They shouldn't be as low as they are for New York City. So I'm interested in understanding, how are you working to scale up MBEs? And how are you looking to ensure that they not only scale up, but they become the prime vendors and create that environment to cultivate that?
Thank you so much for that question, Councilmember. So I'll say, we're doing a couple of things. One, sort of building on what you just heard, we're working with each provider to identify an MNWBE liaison. That's a procurement-specific or a procurement-adjacent person in each human service provider organization who can walk MNWBEs through the procurement process. That's key for the technical assistance part, as well as the relationship-building part. In terms of MBEs specifically, we, for the lists that I mentioned, that we are searching and providing to the human service providers, I mentioned they were sorted by ZIP code, they're also sorted by FGEN Group. And so we're, and, and when we send that out to them, we're pointing to the city's overall numbers, as you've, as you've illustrated, pointing out where the city's contracting is falling and asking for their help in addressing that disparity. So that messaging comes through, and the resources we're giving them, in kickoff meetings where we meet with them, in subcontractor approval processes, when they give us their list of subcontractors they're going to, we're looking at that with an eye towards the, the distribution of the city's wealth through communities, through MNWBEs or MBEs, as you say.
Can I encourage you to put together, like, a street team that can go out and engage with the merchants and the businesses? When I worked on the JFK redevelopment program, I found that we would put out solicitation, but businesses would not be responding to it. One, because it's overwhelming for them, and they don't really have the technical support they need to apply, to even really understand what the opportunity is in front of them and the, especially as an MBE, or getting certified to be designated as one. But we found that when we had those individual conversations, we were able to, one by one, pull them in. And I think that the city may need to look at it in a more granular level, which I know Michael Gardner is well aware, because he did an amazing job at the MTA. But I really would love to see greater participation and also seeing greater primes that are minority businesses that are engaged in these contractual opportunities. Thank you, Chairs.
And you'll forgive me for not addressing this, your question about prime contractors. We have talked to the human service providers to ask for their help in identifying a range of contracts. So that's, like, so that they're not necessarily trying to procure huge contracts from small vendors where they're not going to be able to step into that opportunity. So there's unbundling happening at the human service provider level as well. And that provides opportunities for MBEs or MNWBEs to come in at the ground level and then scale up, using subcontracting as a platform, hopefully moving into city contracting, and then moving into priming in both, in both contexts.
Generally, if I may, generally, the, the idea of closing the disparity within the disparity is a, is a key initiative for this administration. You know, from Michael Gardner, all the way up to the mayor, and everyone across and in between. So we're gathering information as it comes in, where those disparities are, we're, we're isolating contracts that fall within that space, and we are reaching out to those communities to, to, to encourage them to participate in the opportunities that are not just in front of us now, but those that are upcoming.
Finally, Councilmember, I'm, I'm sorry, I did want to highlight, you mentioned the technical assistance, and an initiative that started just in the last year is piggybacking off of the SBS projects of going out there, being in the street, one-on-one technical assistance. Mox has rolled out, Mox in your neighborhood, where that is exactly what we do. We stand there with the, with someone who wants to learn more, wants to get filed a passport, wants to say, where do I go look? It's exactly what we're doing, where we've done, was it 11 events, almost 300 attendees, 4,500 online, which is different, not as personal, but that is exactly what we want to do. I think under the leadership of Director Flores, Chief Garner, and the mayor, the status quo when it comes to engaging with our MNWBEs is not good enough. And we're doing exactly, as you say, trying to get that right, personal one-to-one touch to make sure that they know, this is where you go, this is what you press, this is how you do it.
I would love to have that in my district, so let's connect offline. Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to hear from Rethink Foods and Queens Together at a later testimony where these nonprofits help small businesses, like small, local mom-and-pop shops, actually partake, and they help with the assistance of all the administrative duties, of going through passport, et cetera, and allow them to be subcontractors if they don't want to do that. But I just want to point out that it's great that we are partnering with MWBEs, and we want to continue to increase that, but we need quality assurance. It is not acceptable, for example, the food that's in front of us, if anybody wants to eat it for lunch, be my guest, and if you read it, the label says that there is a shelf life of one month. So clearly Regina's Caterers is producing the food, freezing it, and it's edible for one month, and the providers, the shelter providers, are leaving it on the table like this all day long, all three meals for people to just take, without refrigeration. That is a real problem. So from your perspective, is that, is that part of the fresh, local produce provided by the provider that's acceptable for it to be served to human beings?
I can promise you that we will look into this. It is unacceptable to have food staying out on tables that is required to be refrigerated.
Okay, thank you, because this has been raised to DHS by multiple people, multiple times, over the span of multiple years, even before the migrant crisis. So can you help me understand how these three primes were chosen by DHS? So is Winston, Dahl, and Regina's Caterers, why were they chosen and how? Which ones are MWBEs other than Regina's Caterers?
So I do want to just make a quick correction. In fact, the three primes are Dahl Stillwell, RC Stillwell.
That's Regina.
Is that, okay, that's a DBA?
That's Regina.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you. And then Whitson, sorry, so there's obviously a nomenclature issue here.
Okay, got it.
I'll let my colleague talk to the competitive process and the standards that were used to decide the contract.
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, we use a competitive process, the RFP process. We work closely with our ARCO team, our legal team, for the solicitation. Once the solicitations are received, we have an internal committee that will evaluate the proposals. We usually take a range of people throughout the agency, program, administration, and other areas within the agency to help evaluate it. Based on the evaluation scores, we will then take the one that scored the highest and bring the contractor in, make sure they understand the terms and conditions of the contract, and what the requirements are. Within the contracts, as mentioned earlier, we spell out the New York City food policy and make it very clear to them what the, you know, what's expected of them, you know, as long as we feel that they can meet those requirements, then we will go ahead and recommend that they be awarded. So that's what happened with these.
How are you tracking the complaints that you get for these primes, like Regina's Caterers? That has been happening for multiple years now.
As we get a complaint, we investigate it and try to determine what the actual complaint is, if it's founded.
Have you had disciplinary action for Regina's Caterers for the years of complaints that we've received?
I don't have that information in front of me right now.
Because they've also, they also have two lawsuits. They have two lawsuits from 2021 and 2023, Segarra versus Regina's Caterers, as well as Polanco versus Regina Caterers, June 2023 as well. So I'm just trying to understand, I would like to see your evaluation sheet on how you evaluate your primes, that not-good-faith actor continues to be here, doing business with the city for millions of dollars, and the same way that H&amp;H was able to share with us what LIC Commissary is receiving and Rethink Foods is receiving for their contracts, we would like to see that for your all three primes. And I know that your team is here with you right now, could you please make sure that you are able to get the information, hopefully right now, on what your caps are for your contracts and why there is such a, why is there such a wide range of your food caps per shelter? And I just want to put on the record as well, LIC Commissary for the HPD provider, as a subcontractor for food, has also received complaints. One of the biggest complaints that we get across the board is, and that was transitioned to Rethink Foods. What we get across the board that we can get the largest complaints about is cold food. So can you help me understand why the requirement is one hot meal per day and two cold meals for the rest? Because what we're seeing in a lot of the shelters that get large complaints is cold cereal for breakfast. It's like a little container that you see in the grocery stores, a little plastic container with cereal in it, and then milk, sometimes refrigerated, sometimes not, that are just being laid out. And for lunch, it's usually a small PB&amp;J sandwich, or bologna or ham sandwich with a piece of cheese. So why is it only one hot meal per day?
I, what I can tell you is that has been the pattern and the norm, particularly in homeless shelters, for decades. That is also the case, let's remove the asylum seeker crisis for a moment, the, in homeless shelters, the intention is to also encourage the individuals to go out, and whether it's to look for jobs and do other things, that's one aspect of it. But what we wanted to do when we were standing up asylum seeker operations is to ensure a standardization of service across the board. And so we wanted to do that, again, whether it is, you know, a cereal, a bagel, many different things, there's many different menus that are ways to reach that cold meal, and then the one hot meal a day. And I also, just noting, you know, with efforts to align all of our food costs into making sure that we get healthy, delicious, culturally-appropriate foods at a low price point, that is the one thing, one hot meal, particularly people need that hot meal to have it feel like a meal, but that was an effort to maintain calories and nutritional needs, but also the hot meals are typically the higher price point meals.
It's difficult for me to agree with the lowest price point, because the lowest price point seems to vary so widely, even within one agency. So that's the difficulty that I'm having understanding. So could you please just answer, is Winston and Dahl, are they also MWBEs or no?
So Dahl is an MWBE, Whitson's is not an MWBE, but they have a 30% MWBE goal. And to my understanding, subcontractors have been identified in that contract.
Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Lee, then Councilmember Menon for questions.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Just a couple of quick questions, because there was something that you had mentioned, I think, in one of your answers that made me think of this question, and actually, it's very similar to what Councilmember Brooks Powers just mentioned about the subcontractors and making sure, because, you know, and this is a very, obviously, somewhat different comparison, but when I was running our nonprofit, we did the Meals on Wheels program, and because we provided Korean and Chinese food, we were oftentimes as subcontractors. And even the rates we got as subcontractors per nonprofit was different. And so we actually did hot meals for like, I don't know, it's not too bad. It cost us like $10, $11 a unit, but we only got reimbursed about $5.25, which is below the minimum of the $6 here. So just out of curiosity, how are you ensuring, or keeping track, rather, of the subcontractors? Do you know how many there are? Do you know, because to what Councilmember Brooks Powers was mentioning, it's the Mox and Passport and HHS and Vendex and all that is very complicated, and I know oftentimes a lot of them, even if they want to do the work, they end up dropping out because it's so cumbersome with the system. So it's good to hear that there's trainings that you guys are doing, which is very, very helpful. But in terms of the subcontractors, how are you keeping track of that? And is there something in the actual RFP, for example, that encourages them partnering with various different MWBE subcontractors? And how many, and, sorry, my last part of the question is, how many meals or units are usually the minimum requirement to be a main contractor versus a sub, if there's any sort of differentiation there?
So speaking for DHS, I can answer some of your questions, and then I'll pass to my colleague for the last question regarding the percentage of meals that make them a prime, I think was your question. So in terms of subcontracting, the prime contract will have a subcontracting cap that's to ensure that the prime contractor is controlling the contract and not subbing everything out, which can cause its own problems, of course. In terms of encouragement language, yes, there's encouragement language pointing to MWBEs. We also reinforce that at kickoff meetings with the human service providers to let them know MWB is a priority for the agency. Appreciate our commissioner for messaging that down throughout the agency, so all of our kickoff meetings now include some element of MWB encouragement language and direction if it's a goals contract. I think you also asked, sorry, I think I lost track of your questions.
It's okay, I lost track of my questions.
Yes, sorry. And then, and then in terms of the percentage of contracts that would go to, that are required for someone to prime, can you talk to that, Jim?
Yeah, we don't, we don't look at percentage of meals, we look at the percentage of the contracts. So in particular, with Winston's, they have a 30% goal for MWB, so 30% of the contract, the value has to be, you know, geared towards these subcontractors, the MWB contracts.
And is it that the subcontractors across the board also, how do those rates get decided? Is it left up to the primes? And then also, is it up to the primes to monitor the quality of the food, or how does that work?
The rates in what respect? Can you clarify that, please?
So in terms of how much they get reimbursed per meal, how does that work with the subs? Like, and who controls that price? Is it left up to?
Again, when we put out the contracts, the contracts are bid out per meal by the prime, the prime has to stay within those boundaries. So when the contracts, the, either subcontractors, the meal price will stay the same, but 30% of the value would have to be provided by the subcontractors, in this case MWBs. So in the case of Winston's, 30% of the value of the contract would be.
So, okay, so the rate is not slightly higher for primes because of administrative costs or anything like that? It's straight across the board, whether you're prime or sub?
Correct.
Okay. And then also, if you, any of you can jump in, sorry, but if you could also answer the question of who's in control of the quality, control of the foods when it comes to prime versus subs?
Let me see it. Hi, I'm Mike Garner.
Sorry, really quickly, you have to be sworn in by the committee council.
Oh, I'm going to be sworn in?
Yep. All right. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in your responses to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thanks, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike Garner, I'm the City of New York's Chief Business Diversity Officer. And I wanted to expound on your question as to how we are ensuring that there is a diversity and how we are enforcing MWBE compliance. And I'll tell you from a City Hall perspective, we are having weekly meetings here at City Hall with all of the agencies who are buying goods and services for the asylum seekers. We want to know what contract has been awarded the previous week to now, how many of those contracts have been awarded to MWBEs at the prime level and at the sub-level, and what's in the pipeline. And so under Winston's contracts, I'll tell you, that has been a great success. The Winston's contract, the overall contract, was expiring. We agreed to extend the contract, they agreed to have 30% MWBE goals. And the most recent information that I saw, that there are three certified MWBEs under Winston's contracts totaling about $17.5 million. These are neighborhood restaurants that Winston's has taken under their wing, and they are assisting them. And so one firm on Dyckman Avenue started their meals last week, and that's 4,000 meals per day. And so we are ensuring that the quality of the meals are diverse, and it's reflecting the, 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 the demographic of the asylum seekers who we are, in fact, feeding. Yes.
Nice one to dovetail off of what Chief Garner was saying, from our point of view at health and hospitals. So four quick points I wanted to make, Councilmember. Number one is that with our, the results of our selections through the RFP process that we're going to be bringing to our board this week, 100% of the four vendors are either MWBE or nonprofit. So all of them are either MWBE or nonprofit. What we're doing now is we're at the contract negotiation stage, because we haven't been approved for the ability to sign contracts yet, and as part of that, we're putting together, as Chief Garner was saying, a subcontracting plan to focus on MWBE subcontractors, with especially a focus on diversity and addressing the difference in difference going forward. Number three is we'll be monitoring our subcontract, the subcontracted entities as part of our usual contract monitoring process at H&amp;H. And number four, just wanted to draw this point out, because I think it's a really important one, you asked who controls quality. The answer at our H&amp;H humanitarian centers is we do. I have a staff member on-site 24/7 at every one of our sites, without exception. They're managing all of the vendors at each site, so they're the ones that are ensuring quality of food or other services like security, laundry, you name it. My staff is responsible for ensuring quality at all of our sites.
Great, thank you.
And just if I may, Councilmember One, I did want to make a correction. So I've been tapping away under the table right now, and I do want to correct that RC Stillwell does not stand for Regina Caterers, it stands for Riviera Caterers. So they are one of the top three, and that's, apologies for that.
Okay, so Regina's Caterers are not one of the.
Not one of the prime contracts, they're subcontracts, I believe, on several of the provider contracts, but.
Can you give us a list of all of the shelters that Regina's Caterers is providing and all the subcontracts as a follow-up, so that we can understand? And I would also like to know if any disciplinary measures were ever taken against Regina Caterers after endless amounts of complaints that have taken place over the years?
Thank you, we've got that noted, and we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Just a really quick follow-up, before we pass it to another member, I was just looking at our food quality standards that we have on our city website, and I was just looking at some of the standards for children versus adult meals, and just off of what my colleagues have been stating about some of the foods that were provided for breakfast, like a box of Cheerios with a 1% milk as an option, and a yogurt, that's definitely not up to the standards that we have as examples for meals for young people. We have hummus and a sweet potato as a breakfast option, which I would also love that breakfast. So I'm just wondering, what is, in our analysis, in the standard determination, looking at what we're getting contracted for the price per point, knowing that we are aiming for the lowest bid, how are we then issuing people or pointing people to our city food standards, and then looking at our contracting and making the analysis on, this is the quality food product that we are giving to folks in our city?
Thank you for looking that up, and I will also perhaps refer to Ted, but I will say that in the shelters, you know, there, some are serving families and children, and some are adults. And so the general, we, I will be happy to provide you with some of the menus that are specifically tailored to the children and families, it's particularly important for me personally. And Ted, I don't know if you want to speak to anything else, but I think a general menu and general standards, certainly, I'm glad you see that again, because it is important in what we're serving, adults versus young people, there are differences there.
Yeah, I mean, because I looked up a box of Cheerios, and the fiber in that box of Cheerios is two grams, and the minimum that we have here is seven grams, sure with a low percent fat milk, that probably adds another gram of fiber, but still not up to the par of the minimum of seven that we have on our city standard, so.
Actually, the only thing I would add is, just to give you a very especially precise follow-up, is we'd be happy to share some sample menus from our sites with you, and I think what I would just emphasize is what Kate said, and that as we're crafting the menus, which my staff do with our vendors, but my staff are there in charge of quality, in charge of everything 24/7, we do, we talk about the NYC food standards, and we craft the menus together. So if it, if you, it'd be helpful, we'd be happy to share those with you after the meeting.
Yeah, I would love that. I mean, additionally, and I keep staring at these four compartments, and I'm glad only one is open to, like, I don't know anyone in this room, and, you know, this is a call to action, if anyone would like to take a bite out of it, but I certainly wouldn't, based off of just the smell that hit me. And, you know, I really, I do understand, again, price per point, a hot meal obviously costs more, and it takes more to maintain, you know, do we, do we actually know if folks, like, how many of these areas, like, we don't have refrigeration or enough refrigeration? How are our vendors, or maybe the locations themselves, asking for additional refrigeration or additional heating equipment or anything like that? Like, I know when I go to some of my shelters, one of the main things we looked at is, where were the main communal spaces, and how many refrigerators can they actually keep or maintain? How many needed to be purchased? How frequently are we looking at that and addressing some of these issues, so food doesn't spoil and go bad?
I also want to point out, it's because majority of the DHS shelters in my district, and I know that all throughout the city, continue to remain without a provider, because they have not staffed up. Therefore, the only people that you see inside are National Guards, the National Guards are volunteers, and they do not service the shelter residents in that way. Therefore, one person from DHS or someone from the hotel is laying out all three meals per day outside at the crack of dawn for anyone who wants to grab a meal for all three days. And that's one of the problems that we have right now, where the meals are just being laid out, because there's no one working at the shelters.
Thank you for pointing that out, I'm sure that we'll follow up on that, it's not acceptable. not acceptable.
Sorry, I'm gonna just dovetail a little bit on the, the topic, because since we have Mr. Garner here, and you brought up the contracts and the migrants. I did have a question in terms of the contracts as it pertains to the commuter vans. So, I've gotten a lot of calls from our commuter van owners that are largely based out of Southeast Queens and Brooklyn, people of color. And they shared that a lot of the contracts have been going to non-MBEs, and they have not been granted access. I know I have reached out to the admin and had been told that some of these contracts were existing contracts that they, you know, are using for this. But I'm interested to see, how are we working to ensure that these commuter vans, that they're just as ingrained in the, the New York history as an iconic yellow taxi cab? How are we investing in that industry and ensuring that they are being able to be included in these contract opportunities?
Yes, for transportation, I would certainly circle back around. I understand that there are conversations going on with DCASTs and some of the van owners from Southeast Queens, but I would definitely circle back around with an answer this week for you.
Thank you.
And so, we are, and more broadly speaking, we're, we, we are recruiting MWBE firms across the, the spectrum for opportunities in selling their goods and services to, to the asylum seekers. It is my understanding, as data that we ran as recent as this morning, that there's been more than $520 million in contracts awarded to city-certified MWBE firms in a various areas. And so, transportation is a key area, and we'll be sure to get back in contact with you this week with a response and an answer.
Thank you. We want to make sure these city taxpayer dollars are being spent in Brooklyn and Southeast Queens as well, so I look forward to re-engaging on this. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, great, thank you. A couple more questions. What are, for the Mayor's Office of Food Policy, I'm very interested in the audit and review processes that you have in place over these food contracts, to make sure that standards are being met, and if they're not, what happens?
Thank you for that question. We actually do not have jurisdiction for auditing or review of the contracts. We are helpful and advisors at the point of developing scope to ensure that the scopes for various procurements, including RFPs and bids, call for the, the best and the right foods. But we do not, as a mayor's office, have jurisdiction over auditing the contracts.
So, who does?
I, I, you know, trust that every agency that is managing their contracts is looking to ensure that, again, like, we, as I mentioned, we do a compliance report annually to food standards, but that's different than a, a broader contract management piece.
And I can speak from the point of view of H&amp;H. So, we have a couple of levels of auditing and oversight within H&amp;H. So, one is that we have our H&amp;H board, we're a public benefit corporation. Our board, in their oversight function, completes oversight and can revoke any contract at any time if there are quality concerns or other concerns that they would deem worthy of revoking a contract. Day-to-day, one thing that's very important that we do is I have teams on-site that not only are monitoring quality of, of the food that's provided, but also making sure that, for example, each ingredient of each of the food items is labeled in, in multiple languages. So, if you have an allergy to peanuts, you'd know in English and Spanish, for example, if there's peanuts, they're one of the ingredients in each meal. So, each meal is broken down by ingredients, and we make sure that those are posted every day, that they're reliable, that people don't have questions. Another thing that we audit very closely, that my team does at H&amp;H, is consumption levels. So, we've worked very hard to achieve, across our 430,000 meals provided each week, 95%, a 95% rate of consumption, which minimizes leftovers significantly. And then for the 5% that would be considered leftovers, we donate those to City Harvest or to other organizations, including Coalition for the Homeless.
And in terms of the payment structure for H&amp;H for these contracts, what amount is paid upon contract execution?
So, the contracts are based on, again, as Councilmember Brewer was mentioning, was talking about earlier, based on the bills that we receive, and then we pay, and we have a standard process for doing that, which I'd be happy to have our contracts team share more about after the meeting. I can share with you the exact numbers of what's been paid to date, though, if that would be helpful. It's the same numbers I shared earlier, just a bit to recapitulate. So, these are numbers that we shared at the finance meeting, which is a public meeting that our board had last week. So, to date, Health and Hospitals has paid $42.5 million through October of 2023, based on receipts received, to LIC Commissary. And to date, for Rethink Food, Health and Hospitals has paid $18.3 million through October of 2023, based on receipts received, and that have been processed and resulted in those payments.
So, I guess my question is about, do you, and it's not really just a question for H&amp;H, it's for all of the agency, are there clawback provisions? So, when there are instances like we see with Regina's Caterers, when there are serious quality assurance issues, what type of clawback provisions does each agency have, if any?
As I mentioned earlier, you know, if we do have an issue with a particular vendor, we do put them on a corrective action plan that they, they have to adhere to and attest to. In the event that they don't meet the qual, don't meet the corrective action plan that was put forth, then we have provisions in the contract where we would, you know, terminate the contract and...
Is Regina's Caterers on a corrective action plan right now?
We don't contract with Regina directly.
Who does?
It's the nonprofits.
So, so there's really no, so when you have a situation like Regina's Caterers, where we've got clear quality assurance, equality control issues, you're saying that there's no recourse that the city has?
As was, as was mentioned earlier, it's noted, and we're gonna follow up and, and look further into...
Yeah, can you help us understand for subcontractors, because what you just stated to Councilmember Menon, it sounds like there is no accountability for subcontracts, for corrective course of action?
Right, is corrective course of action only for prime contracts?
No, it's for, the nonprofits are held accountable. So, if there's, if Regina Caterers, we look at the prime contract. So, if Regina Caterers is sub to the prime, we look at the prime. It's not, if, if, maybe I'm saying it wrong, so...
No, no, no.
We look at, we look at the nonprofit with the corrective action plan for Regina Caterers.
Okay, and as of we know right now, do any, do we know who subcontract with Regina, and if there has been any corrective action for that prime?
I know there are corrective action plans out there. I don't know if there's specific for Regina.
Okay, can we get a list of all the corrective? Okay, great.
So, we're gonna get a list of all, all the companies that are currently on a corrective action plan, correct? And can we all, I just want to make sure that that's what we're gonna get, because that's certainly what we need to get. And then, secondly, how much, for those that are on a corrective action plan, has any money been clawed by, back by the respective agencies, or not?
So, so we're noting your request, absolutely, we'll follow up. And to clarify, you're talking about relative to food shelter procurements, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just also want to put on the record, since I couldn't get any DHS data, I had to look it up myself. And according to the three-year agency action plan for Department of Homeless Services from 2021 to 2023 for New York City Good Purchasing Program, I have a question. So, for data collection and procurement processes, it says that for your fiscal year '19 assessment status, only 8% of your data was completed, and 21% was partial data. Could you help me understand what is being done currently to have data, especially from your own vendors, to increase data completion, like vendors and subcontractors like Regina's Caterers, who clearly have quality assurance and integrity issues?
I'll speak to that, because that is a requirement that was put in when I came into office. And why we signed this executive order in 2022 was the result of vendors that would not share their data about where food was coming from. So, part of the goal of that transparency is increasing vendor compliance year over year. I believe that we have seen some, some strides within DHS, and we know that we're working very closely with them, as well as with, you know, again, the, the, I can't remember the split, but it's something like 60% of their food is coming from primes, and something like 40% is coming from subs. So, working with all of the subcontractors too, that are predominantly through human service providers, which makes it more complicated, because we don't have a requirement to get, we, we don't want to overtax and burden nonprofit providers who are utilizing sub, subcontract with food providers. But I would be more than happy to, to meet with you and further outline that with my colleagues from DHS.
Okay, so subcontractors don't have the requirement to report to the agencies?
When, when they are, when they are subcontracted through a human service provider, aka nonprofit.
Then they don't have to report directly to the city agency on all their data?
The history of the traceability of the food that they buy, because for a nonprofit provider, it's exorbitantly taxing on them, as opposed to a, a food business, as an example.
Okay. And I have a question for MoX. With all the quality assurance and vendor integrity issues that we're having with, especially as we're seeing through the migrant crisis, how is your $1.16 million and $618,000 cut to, or peg to your agency going to impact this work of oversight?
Thank you, Chair Wan. So, in terms of specific budget cuts, I know that there are ongoing discussions with OMB, and I'd have to defer to Director Flores and her future testimony regarding any specific budget cuts. However, I can say, in terms of oversight of the contracting process, the procurement process, as we're saying, all of, if there are issues with quality, if there are issues with contract performance, then MoX does maintain the databases, such as where you would have your, do your responsibility determination, where the vendor's gonna do their integrity disclosures, and where the agencies are evaluating performance for other agencies to see. So, those, that functionality exists, and it's there for agencies to use. So, if there are performance issues, and I would say if there are specific performance issues with specific vendors, to, we are also always here, because it's crucially important that agencies know about performance issues that may have occurred in other contracts to inform their decisions. So, I would say, I can't speak to any specific impact that it would have, although I would say that the vendor integrity, performance evaluation, vendor disclosures, those, that functionality exists currently.
I have concerns for those pegs, but I'll move on. And I just want to put on the record, since we couldn't get a figure from DHS directly, that according to this New York City Good Purchasing Food Purchase metric from a version that was released in February 22nd, 2023, as of fiscal year 2021, the total food spend from DHS was $73,101,228. And that is probably going to be an increased number with the migrant crisis the last two years. And for the overall spending citywide, the total food spend in 2021 was $296,152,385, with New York food spend for local economies being at $92,130,269. And for MWBE spend, it was $7,457.26. So, those numbers in, in comparison to the larger spend, I want to make sure that's on record. I do, I think we're gonna move on, no more questions, and I will hand it back to the General Counsel.
I'm, I'm just gonna switch it up on us and ask about the winterization bill, because why not, right? Let's end on something a little more light, I suppose, even though you guys, you folks don't like this bill. So, just really quickly, INTRO 964 would require MOFP to develop and implement a plan to prepare New York City farmers markets for winter weather conditions and year-round accessibility. What challenges do you foresee in executing a winterization plan?
We would like, thank you. We also have been all, supporting farmers market operators for years, and it has never come up to us specifically the need for or the detail around a winterization plan. So, before offering support, we would just like to understand the need, so that we can actually speak to that. You know, Grow NYC, which is one of several supporters, farmers market operators across the city, is very actively vocal with us. In fact, you know, we support them with Commissioner Vassan on the Health Bucks program, getting payments processed in time, getting PPE during COVID, and many, many things. So, it seems that if there was a need, we just want to hear about it, so that we can be particularly responsive. Because again, you know, we've got farmers market, the 20 of Grow NYC's 50 markets operate year-round. And then the nature of, particularly in this region, farmers markets is we have less available. And part of the beauty of farmers markets is connecting people with food and with seasonality. So, understanding that, you know, we're gonna have less in December than we are gonna have in August is part of understanding our food system, and we want to support that.
Sure. I'd love to be a part of the conversations on that going forward with Councilmember Joseph. For me particularly, I spent about, not I spent, but out of my district office budget, we did $25,000 in health books that the entire Parkchester Market length of time, it went to the three or four sessions before that, we were depleted with the amount of need that's coming out of my district. And it's great, because that goes right to farmers' pockets, New York farmers' pockets, along with answering for a food desert need of getting fresh produce into people's households and onto their tables. But I'd love to continue those conversations. And the, the last question I have quickly is, how is MOFP going to be affected by the pegs, and if at all, would this peg affect the oversight of MOFP on food procurement contracts, and if it is part of the decision on, you know, furthering on the bill itself on 934, on 964?
Thank you for, for raising that. Like every city agency, we are subject to the peg. I do not foresee at this point any, any implications on our reporting and oversight of those pieces.
Okay. And I did see it was about $165,000 peg, from what I saw in the November plan. Is that personnel, is that...
It's our, it's our, other than personnel services.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my winterization questions. And I will now pass it over to Committee Counsel.
Okay, thank you, Chairs. This concludes the administration's portion of our testimony. We'll now move to public testimony.
Thank you.
For in-person panelists, please come up to the dais once your name has been called. And for virtual panelists, we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. Council members who have questions for a particular panelist should raise their hands. And council members who are here virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and the chair will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I'll now turn it to my colleague to call the first panel.
Thank you, Alex. All right, I'd like to now welcome up to the panel to speak, Matthew Joswiak from Rethink Foods, Zach Khan, Zachariah Khan, Elena Rystovski, Latoya Meters, Ali Ahmed, and Anjel Sanchez. All right. Again, that, I'm not sure if we have everyone, but that would be Matthew Joswiak, Zachariah Khan, Elena Rystovski, Latoya Meters, Ali Ahmed, and Anjel Sanchez. All right, thank you, everyone. Mr. Joswiak, would you like to start?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today about Rethink's food contracting work with the city, providing culturally competent meals to asylum seekers through our network of small business food partners. My name is Matt Joswiak. I'm a CEO and founder of Rethink Food, an NYC-based nonprofit. We currently work in partnership with Health and Hospitals, the Office of Emergency Management, and DOCO via Housing and Preservation Development. I want to thank the entire City Council and Speaker Adams for their leadership on the asylum seeker response, specifically Councilmember Menon for continuously advocating for small business community. Your leadership has been a bright light for so many entrepreneurs in every borough. To Chair Wan for your meticulous and thoughtful oversight into better contracting processes, and Chair Ferris, Councilmember Powers, and Councilmember Brewer for their commitment to improving the lives of our newest neighbors. I'd also like to thank H&amp;H, Dr. Ted Long, and Chris Keeler for their leadership, constant and candid feedback and attention to food quality and cultural sensitivity. I'd also like to thank the Office of Emergency Management, Commissioner Zach Iskell, and Kate McKenzie for upholding the commitment to the 10-year food plan, 10-year food policy plan, and seeing small business and cultural competency upheld in our city's food procurement. Additionally, I'd like to thank LIC Commissary for their commitment to quality when it comes to serving our new neighbors. Rethink's mission is to create a more equitable and sustainable food... Rethink's mission is to create a more equitable and sustainable food system. During the pandemic, we learned that the small businesses and local restaurants were well-equipped to provide culturally celebrated, healthy food. That accommodates the religious sensitivities to their community. It doubles jobs in local communities, it increases tax revenue by 25%. And it increases spending in local communities by 33%. And as I'll hear from partners today. It brings a thoughtfulness, passion, and hospitality to the food service that we provide, which has historically been left out of emergency and supplemental food programs. It's been rewarding to see the impact of our model on newly arrived New Yorkers. For example, at the Quality Inn in Queens with partners Brain Food and Chefscape and our partnership with DocGo. We have been able to bring New York City restaurants to serve meals that celebrate the culture of our newest neighbors. We have learned a lot and we are committed to having an open dialogue with the city and our partners on the ground to continuously improve the way that we serve our new, our new neighbors. To close, Rethink has invested over $32 million of philanthropy, of philanthropy dollars into small minority women-owned businesses. A few of which you will hear from today. I have the honor of representing a diverse network of small business food partners. You will hear next about the impact of our collaborative work. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon and thank you New York City Council for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Ali Ahmed and I am the owner-operator of Brain Food, the Smart Kitchen. We're proudly, we proudly operate in Brooklyn and specialize in crafting affordable, healthy food that isn't just kale and quinoa. I have had the privilege to work with Rethink since March of 2020. They saved my business from closing by allowing me an opportunity to cook meals for numerous CBOs then. And now have helped me grow my business by doing the same for asylum seekers. Through this partnership, we've made over 500,000 meals in this program. We have been able to expand our team, hiring over 25 individuals from the very communities we serve. This not only strengthens our business, but also uplifts local residents by providing employment opportunities. Our employment, our employees receive competitive hourly rates ranging from 18 to $25 per hour. Working with Rethink has not only allowed us to grow our business, but has also made a huge difference in our lives as business owners. Yes, it has given us financial stability, enabling us to pay back all the loans from the COVID era. But more importantly, it has pushed us to be better and more responsible with how we give back to our communities. We would like to thank Rethink for planting the seed of philanthropy in us and showing us how we can make a difference in our own way. I am proud to say that, I am proud to say that seed has grown into a beautiful tree with many branches now. For instance, every Wednesday for the past three years on 34th Street, we feed 200 to 400 homeless and now migrant families. Hot meals fully funded by our business and PCNY partners. Mayor Adams himself comes to volunteer almost every week and has helped take this project to the next level. Collaborating with Rethink has taken away the biggest barriers of entry for small business to be able to get involved in this kind of contracting work. The paperwork, the administrative tasks, and the lawyer fees. By taking care of that, Rethink empowers us to do what we do best, cooking food that the community would love. I'd like to end by saying simply, this program works. The method of using small restaurants for large contracts is no longer a theory, but a proven model that works. Rethink has handpicked the most resilient, resourceful, reliable group of small business partners that will not let you down. Allowing small businesses like ours to participate not only keeps the funds hyper-local, but it helps us get through unsure times with guaranteed work. This model can be applied and expanded to DHS and Health and Hospital initiatives. The approach is a win-win, keeping the money in NYC and addressing the needs of anyone in need of food. Thank you for your time today.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the New York City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to address you here today. My name is Dylan Aristovski. I am the Director of Operations and Programs at Marlo Bistro and Catering. We are located in, we are located in Manhattan, but also operate Fandvi Mata in Brooklyn. I stand by you today, not just as an individual, but as a small business who believes in the power of collective action and civic engagement to affect positive change. This is maybe the most important reason for our partnership with Rethink, the belief of rebuilding our community through collective work and support. We first started contracting with the city when the pandemic happened in 2020. And it was only because of one email which was sent to us from Rethink, bringing our attention to this opportunity. I remember thinking, how can we compete for such a big contract? We are such a small business, where will we begin? But the culture of compassion, empowerment, and solidarity that Rethink selfishly shared reminded us of everything we have and everything we are. And how our involvement in providing our food for the people in need can have a significant impact on their well-being. That led to a series of city contracts, one after another, building confidence, agility, retaining staff, new staff hiring. All the improvements that are necessary to fulfill and serve a city contract. And in the same time grow in our very competitive industry. In closing, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the chance to testify before you today. And share how much contracts of this scale are important to small businesses like ourselves. In providing a sense of long-term stability, planning for the future, investing in growth. And ultimately contributing to economic stability within the local community. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. Thank you for providing me and the many other dedicated food service professionals. This platform to share our passion and experience towards these endeavors. My name is Latoya Metters and I am the co-founder of Collective Fair. And hospitality services company with two eateries in Brooklyn. And the founder of Collective Foodworks, a nonprofit organization with a focus on sustainable, culturally relevant local food systems. Nutrition access for families and the development of green workforce pathways. From April of 2020 to present, alongside partners such as Rethink, my company has provided well over 3 million. Healthy nutritious meals and counting for New Yorkers in need and those seeking asylum in our city. We have also created over 250 jobs and training opportunities through these efforts. My partnership with Rethink has allotted my company and organization the space and resources to provide these services and opportunities. But more importantly, the time to focus on delivering high-quality, culturally relevant food delivery services as well as provide. The ability for those in our employ to grow, thrive through skills training, certifications, and quality compensation. At a minimum of $17 per hour. It is no secret that New York City has been overwhelmed by the influx of migrants seeking asylum and in need of crucial resources. Opening 210 emergency shelters, 17 which are large-scale humanitarian relief centers. As well as launching initiatives such as Project Open Arms to get children enrolled in our public school systems. And the Asylum Application Help Center in the City of New York, which assists in getting many of the documentation. Needed to begin work so that they too may provide for their families and contribute to our great city. However, this story is not new to our city. It is the foundation on which it was built. The continued benefit of empowering partnerships between organizations such as Rethink and small businesses like Collective Fair. Is crucial to ensuring that New York City residents and those seeking asylum will be fed, employed, educated, and trained. Which can ease the demands on its, on its current institutions. Like the many who have come before, they can ultimately create a powerful cycle of prosperity for those who have decided to make New York City their home. Once again, thank you for letting me speak to you all today. Thank you for giving New York City businesses a voice.
Good afternoon, New York City Council. My name is Angel Sanchez. And I am the executive chef at Chefscape Kitchen, a small WMDV business. We have had the honor of working with Rethink to produce meals for migrant shelters over the last 10 months. This work has allowed us to hire many employees during times of economic difficulties. As well as provide thousands of meals to those in their need. While on the surface, this has been an amazing experience, I feel it's especially important to tell my story so you all can understand. How much deeper this work goes for myself and many of my colleagues at Chefscape and Rethink. I originally immigrated to New York from Mexico over 20 years ago. This journey was an incredibly difficult and toxic one. There were many nights I did not know where my next meal would come from. This is a feeling that is hard for anyone to understand who has not experienced it firsthand. During my early days, months, and years in America, I had a dream to not only establish myself in America, but to truly embrace being American. And experience the wealth of opportunities this country offers. For me, this is including hoping one day I will be able to give back for all these, all the blessings I have received as a New Yorker. Since making my way in New York, I have worked in a successful New York restaurants. Being and work hand-in-hand with world-famous Michelin-starred chefs. However, this opportunity to help thousands of individuals and families is a situation I am all too familiar with. It has not only been the highlight of my career, but has helped me fulfill my journey of embracing the American dream and maybe even more deeply. The New York spirit to its fullest. I want to thank the New York City's Council, Rethink, and the other food providers. And my coworkers for the work being done to support migrants arriving in this city. With so little in their pockets, but big dreams in their hearts. I know with the city's support, they can go on to do great things as a New Yorker's. And hopefully one day Americans, I know they can because I was once them. And I believe one day they will be me standing here giving back for the next generation of migrants. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Okay, hi to everyone. My name is Zachariah Khan. I am the owner of a small business based in Brooklyn, New York, on Yonan Avenue. My partnership started with Rethink in the pandemic of 2020. When it was really hard to come out and you know, even buy your own grocery and it was those days. Where we were able to provide hot meals and especially halal hot meals to so many residents in the area. You know, there was a time when we were about to lay off three of my employees out of six because the sales went down, especially in the pandemic. This was the time when the Rethink actually came along and we were able to keep all of those employees at work. And we were even able to hire more employees because of their contract that was given to us. So over this whole period of time, like you know, our small business really benefited from the whole partnership with the Rethink. And now coming to this asylum seeker's part, you know, my whole team, we are immigrants. And my whole chef and everybody, we are all immigrants. We know, you know, what immigrants would like to eat. And especially, you know, the halal food, because we are certified by halal food providers in the area. So we know how to prepare, what are the restrictions on the halal, preparing the halal meals. So we know this whole, you know, requirements. In how to make halal and also which should be culturally appropriate for the people who want to eat the halal. So like, we normally, on an average, we serve 8,000 meals a week. And all these meals are prepared by all these immigrant workers. And especially, I have hired three asylum seekers who came to this country through these borders, they got their papers. And now they are working with me. So the asylum seekers are actually preparing meals for the asylum seekers, you know, and. All these meals are prepared by these workers. And the quality that we normally maintain is that, you know, what we serve a menu that we serve on the restaurant menu. I mean, this is the menu that we actually, seven days menu that we serve is the menu that we serve on, to our regular customers. So it is not really a low-quality meal that we prepare for them. You know, we don't really compromise our quality or the quantity of the food. And I'm pretty much sure like, you know, the, the food that we serve is 100% being used by the asylum seeker because it's. It is made to their taste. And also, you know, we mostly we serve the hot meals, which is also liked by, by these asylum seekers. So from this part. From this whole partnership, what I get is that, you know, what, with a partnership with Rethink would actually enhance. And improve more small businesses and they will improve more, more small business owners to be able, you know, and get more business, to do more business for the city. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for your testimony. And I particularly appreciate as a former small business owner myself, that you all are taking the time to come here. I know how hard that is. I really appreciate you being here. So a couple of different comments and, and questions. As the Chair of the Small Business Committee, I am thrilled that small businesses are getting this important work. I wrote to the mayor over a year ago urging him to not utilize out-of-state catering contracts to be fulfilling this work and instead to utilize small businesses. So really happy to see that happen. Can you talk a little bit about how these contracts are allowing you to retain your employees? Potentially to hire new employees given this volume of work?
Would it be helpful just to go down the line and we can all talk about the number of employees that we've, we've hired down the line? Is that helpful?
Sure. So originally, we had about 10 employees that ran the whole shop, but since we started making the meals, we make about 2,000 meals and now we have a total of about 25 employees. And of them, I would say more than 50% are asylum seekers looking for the opportunity to work.
We first had around 14 to 15 employees. Now we have 32 and still employing every week. And they're full-time employees. And we also, I wanted to say that we, because of the opportunities and chances we got. We were able to become part of High Road Restaurants and One Wage Fair, which allows us to, you know, pay a fair wage our new employees.
So to date, we've hired over 300 different people through workforce development and training. So what we do is we do culinary training program and sign-on-to-serve communities, training the students how to do, how to prepare food through the culinary way. Because our team is a bunch of dedicated chefs. Then what they do, we also do, we work along with farms and get the kids trained. As far as in agriculture, to training to learn how to do growing food. We work along with a few farms, hydroponic and aquaponic farms in New York City. So by being able to build an entire career pathway for many different students. So this has helped us also maintain jobs. Also, we have students that go off to college and then they come back to us during the summertime.
At Chefscape, before we started this program, we used to be like 10 employees. Now we are over 40 employees. And we, thanks to this program, we rehired some of the employees that we lost during pandemic times. So this program really helped us to, to keep employees at least at 40 hours a week. Paying over the minimum wage.
Yeah, I had 10 employees. Right now I have 16. So six, basically I was able to hire six new employees and most of these employees, they are asylum, they were asylum seekers by themselves. So now that is the beauty of this whole thing that asylum seekers are making meals for asylum seekers.
And are you all making the food on-site or are you utilizing other kitchens?
No, we are, I think we're all making it on-site, in between our services. So while we're still running the full-time restaurant. We find a way to do it in between our service rushes, so.
Early in the morning, early in the night, but it's a collective work and it's amazing how our staff are like thankful. They understand why they have their job because it's super unpredictable right now. The sales change, especially, you know, now coming wintertime. So they are very, very thankful. And there is a humility in the process and gratitude in the process of making these meals, which is very important, especially because we all come from hospitality.
I'll share a funny.
As far as us, yes, we've been able to, so we have the two restaurants. And then now we have just launched a space in East New York, which is a 60,000 square foot space. We partnered with another local nonprofit and two other community-based organizations. And are building out a workforce development training program around agriculture, food development. To move towards emergency food hubs to help galvanize, galvanize communities. So looking at how to create equitable food systems inside communities.
Do you have questions? Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate you taking the time and listening through a very technical conversation with the agencies to. Advocate for more small businesses being involved in our food contracting.
We appreciate your scrutiny on them.
Thank you.
I was rooting for you the whole time.
One of the main questions that I get asked when we suggest the small business involvement in food procurement is the ability to scale. So it's really great to hear that you're able to do that in addition to your food services. And when we talk about now competitive bidding. And when we talk about now competitive bidding, because we're moving away from emergency contracts, one of the concerns that you heard from the agency directly as well is that you would not be able to participate. So do you agree with that or do you believe that now you're able to do bulk purchasing and do catering, that you are able to compete with these other large scale caterers that are providing that kind of food?
So at the current price point that we're at now, we can definitely compete and we've been executing it very well with amazing quality food. We are collectively as a group working on creating a sort, buying club for us so we can all just buy under a certain like price point, since we're a collective now with a decent amount of volume between all 10 partners. So I think that's not the problem at all. Like leave it to us to figure it out. You know, we are the resilient and most reliable and problem solving like contractors you can hire.
Okay, great.
And especially, I'm so sorry, I just want to point out that Rethink was the platform that enabled all of this. So the way we are all thinking is I'm not one anymore. We are together. So we share all of our know-how so we can compete and we really do care.
Well, first off, we wouldn't be providing meals like that. Most of us are trained professionals and we take a lot of pride in the type of food that we put out, but also understanding that serving food with dignity is of the utmost importance. It was the council member that was speaking earlier about procurement from New York State farms. I personally feel that that is one of the most important things that we can do to create a local food economy by buying food from upstate. There was the Nourish in New York program that we were working on that was happening during 2020 and 2021. That program sort of, not quite sure what happened to it, but I thought it would be a very viable program and I actually even wrote some menus based off of food procurement from New York State farmers and how that could be used inside of organizations such as Rethink and other restaurants.
You know, as a small business owner, you know, what, most of us are immigrants. We are hardworking. Our workers are hardworking. You know, I think we are pretty much competitive. I mean, these large companies, I don't think they can compete with us when it comes to competition, you know, and being resilient and especially like, you know, cutting the price down because we have, you know, these immigrants working, they're hardworking and I don't think they will be able to, because they have to pay a higher rate, you know, and their expenses are more, their overhead than ours. So we can actually deliver more for less.
Thank you. I have a few questions specifically for the CEO of Rethink Foods. We are glad to see you here. I know that you were first invited to the September 21st hearing and we just wanted to ask how you were able to attend this hearing, but you were not able to attend the September hearing.
You know, we're, to be candid, we are, we are new at this as a nonprofit organization and we have learned to go through the right channels and we appreciate the invitation and the thoughtfulness that you put forward with it and going through the correct avenues, which we just didn't have before, unfortunately.
Okay. So you were, you couldn't attend previously because you had to go through a channel of approvals internally or with the city partner?
With, with the city and with the mayor's office. And so it was, we were invited about two weeks ago to this. We got the final approval 72 hours ago, so.
Got it, from the mayor's office?
Yep.
Okay. And I want to clarify, when Dr. Ted Long was here from H&amp;H, he said that his cap for the contract is $14.40 for his meals, for per diem, for three meals per day. And then according to what the OID team found is for the contracts, for your per diem, it's three meals plus unlimited snacks throughout the day to feed individuals at the city H&amp;H Herks. And per H&amp;H contract agreement seems to pay Rethink $17 per person for the day of the food. Is that correct? Because we're calculating that according to the contract payments made to the city to rethink, it's supposed to not exceed 87,800,000 and that's for one year. So we're trying to understand the discrepancy between what he just testified, 1440 and $17 of what we're calculating.
Sure. In the beginning of the contract, it was an emergency situation like he stated and then over time, H&amp;H was extremely thoughtful in bringing it down percentage point by percentage point to where we are today. We, it's hard to bring the price down to start at 17 and go to 1440, but they did it in an incredibly respectful way by bringing it down little by little, kind of month over month. And our partners managed to make it all work and happen that way.
Okay, perfect. So now you are, you started at 17 because of the emergency contracts and now you are able to meet the 1440 that he stated on the record.
Yep.
Great. And for the new contract, were you just renewed for your existing contract under the emergency or did you have to go through a competitive bidding process?
We went through a competitive bidding process for the first time as an organization.
Okay. And you don't, you, do you happen to know if there were other vendors, who the other vendors were that competing or did they not disclose out for you?
Nope, we didn't disclose other vendors that we know of. I heard, I heard of some people that were applying, but that's it.
Okay. And how much have you been paid by the city to date and how much it still owes you? Because we are seeing a lot of complaints of money owed that has yet to be paid.
I can't speak to the exact amounts. I think our chief financial officer is here, but the city has been timely and communicative in their payment process. I think that they understand that we are a network of small businesses and that payment terms are very difficult. Yeah, so they've been communicative and timely in their response.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that because we do not hear that from all of our vendors, especially for DHS and for H&amp;H in particular, because it doesn't go through the same oversight through the controller's office as well as with the city. You heard both council member Brewer and I talked to H&amp;H about how they are currently processing their invoices through a human capital management system, which is for HR, not for invoicing or payments. So would you be willing to share the receipts and invoices or proofs of payments related to your city contract with the city councils, Department of Investigations?
Could I get back to you on that?
Okay. And have you encountered, and this is a broad question for all of you, are you encountering any other issues onsite in regards to food or anything else that you want us to be aware of for the migrants that wasn't already discussed today?
I'll go to the partners.
Because I also know that for you in particular, you have more than H&amp;H, you have a HPD contract now and we want to expand that. So you are getting an exposure to a wide variety of migrants who are facing a lot of difficulties and challenges.
So some of the sites don't have proper refrigeration, but in the case when you have like real restaurant people running the show, like we take the extra step of bringing in thermal bags with ice packs. And for the hot food, we deliver the hot food in these hard thermoses and let them keep it overnight and then the next day pick them up and you don't even know how many we've lost in the process. But we do just to make sure that the food stays at safety temperatures and it's not just spread out on the table like that. So they open up just one bag at a time and take out as they need while the rest of the food will sit in the food safety zone until it's ready to serve. We also gave them monitoring, temperature monitoring probes, so they don't even have to open the basket over and over to check the temperature. It's a probe, you put it in there and on the outside it'll tell you how safe the food is. So that's what you get when you have, you know, resourceful, small businesses doing the job, you know? We don't take no for an answer, we'll figure it out.
How many across the board are you seeing personally of sites without refrigeration? Is it almost all the sites that you provide for or is it rare?
It's a lot of just the emergency ones where they had to turn kind of like gyms into, into shelters. Those were really, really challenging. For the most part, all of the Herk sites that we work with have proper refrigerations through H&amp;H. Really, it is just the, the emergency sites in which we provided refrigeration or shipped refrigeration over there.
Got it. Thank you. And lastly, do you have any recommendations for us from everything that you've heard today on how we can improve the current contracting or procurement process to involve more local small businesses into the fold?
I have a, I have a very strong opinion on this. I think that, that what Dr. Ted Long said is actually the most, one of the most important comments. Consumption needs to be measured and needs to be documented. We've seen sites and I've heard stories of nonprofits across the country where they're finding consumption rates of 10, 20, 30% of the food, which means even if you are saving $4 and bringing it down to 11, you're paying for it three times. Because what happens is it's these individuals, everybody has to eat. So they walk across, you know, the street and they go to a local church or they go to some of the other nonprofits that rethink funds and they, they eat, you know, they eat there. And so if we could have a conscious measure of consumption, which I think would have a better sense of where cost should be, because at a certain level of price point, even though it is better for the taxpayer, the consumption rate plummets and it's really the kind of key metric that I've only heard of H&amp;H measuring.
Thank you. Anybody else with any recommendations? Councilmember Menon?
I think we need the more partners like rethink who can help us get through all the paperwork and let them do the vetting process of the restaurant partners. During COVID, they went through hundreds of restaurants to see who can actually produce and keep up with the production. Like they have the A-list of the New York City restaurants that can produce meals on demand. Like they've done the hard work, they've done the research and development to get where we are now. Like find more partners like this who can deal with the logistical, the logistical paperwork lawyer part and just let us do what we're good at, making food though, you know? Chef's kiss.
That is great. So another question I have, you talked very persuasively about how you can consolidate purchasing. You all are working on doing that and that will obviously drive down the price. As you probably heard from the testimony today, one of our biggest frustrations with this hearing is the fact that these various city agencies do not seem to be talking to each other, do not seem to be standardizing their processes, are not harnessing the city's purchasing power to drive down costs. So I guess more of a question for rethink, in your dealings with these agencies, have you seen any efforts on the part of the agencies to try to standardize, to try to drive costs down, to try to work collectively on one single process that will lower the price ultimately?
You know, we just started working with, with HPD, but I would say in H&amp;H, you know, we've had open dialogue with LIC commissary to focus on that. And it's been encouraged, they made the intro, you know, so it was, it's been encouraged that we focus on this. There's been no direct like come together and try to drive prices down through group purchasing, but encouraged collaboration between other food procurement, other, other food providers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much to this panel. We really, really appreciate you all being here and taking time out of your day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for our panelists. And for the next panel, I would like to invite Jonathan Forgash and Sandra Jaquez up. Hello and thank you. Ms. Jaquez, if you want to start.
Good afternoon, all. Thank you, council, committee, Chairs Menon, Juan and Parias and the entire committee for the opportunity to share testimony today on the role of small businesses in shelter food procurement. I am Sandra Jaquez. I'm the president of the New York State Latino Restaurant Bar and Lounge Association, which is a nonprofit organization representing the interest of hundreds of Hispanic minority and immigrant owned restaurants and nightlife venues throughout the city of New York. As an organization deeply rooted in the community, our members want to participate in the shelter food procurement process in the city, especially given our expertise in providing culturally competent food. However, the shelter food procurement system is flawed and oftentimes cuts us out of the process. While there is an effort to involve small businesses in the shelter food procurement, more needs to be done to ensure those businesses willing and able to provide for the community have access to city contracts. The current system for this type of procurement is incredibly bureaucratic and complex, which prohibits many of our members from participating. There needs to be greater education and transparency into the procurement process to prevent wasted resources like our members from being cut out of the process. For every dollar spent at a small business in New York City, 70 cents remains in the community. The same cannot be said for large chain stores. By having small businesses provide the food to shelters, not only would most of our vulnerable receive better and more appropriate food, but it would provide an opportunity for significant economic impact to our local communities. As a small business myself, 20 years having a restaurant, I'm just saying that it is extremely difficult to try to get into these contracts. I'm an MWBE myself and for the last year and it's been impossible and difficult to try to get these contracts. Just the whole process as to trying to go after these contracts has been completely difficult. I reached out to every city agency that I can just to learn the process and it's been impossible to do so. So that's on my personal level and on top of all our members that we have as well. The same situation has been with them. It's just very hard. And once you do try to get these contracts and you're outfitted by these other sources that have been in this environment for many years and it just seems to be going to the same people, these contracts just be going to the same two or three entities and, you know, we just want to have, you know, a say in this and have an opportunity as well because our businesses are really hurting. On my way down here, you know, driving through my neighborhood, I just saw that for the, in the last two weeks, five of our restaurants shut down. And I was in shock when I actually passed by one that has been in our neighborhood staple for over 25 years and it has a for sale sign, I mean a closed down sale sign. So just wanted to say that. I also want to thank the committee and the entire city council for their attention on this matter. Our members are eager to assist and provide food to those in the shelter system and we look forward to continued partnership with the council and relevant agencies to ensure this procurement process is accessible for small businesses. Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am Jonathan Forgash, founder and executive director of Queens Together, a restaurant-driven food relief organization. We started our work in March 2020, just as COVID-19 was shutting down New York City. Restaurants were closing, people were losing jobs, getting sick and going hungry. We built a system to raise money and pay restaurants to do what they are licensed to do, provide culturally fresh made meals to the public. We utilized this system to build a boots-on-the-ground emergency response food relief operation and restaurant empowerment program. To date, Queens Together has helped feed over 400,000 people and supported hundreds of restaurants. Today, our business model supports multicultural mom and pop restaurants on the road to success and partners with them to provide meals to neighbors facing food and economic insecurity. The small business restaurants of Queens are perfectly situated to provide these culturally appropriate fresh made meals to shelters across the city. Not only can we match restaurants based on cultures and dietary needs, but our model directs the flow of funding to local restaurants, which will then uplift the economy by way of jobs, goods and services. We see this work as community building. Successful small business entrepreneurship is a pathway to the middle class for families across the city. These businesses are also a source of job creation and prosperity in their neighborhoods. With every dollar we spend on food relief, meals are provided to people in need, small business restaurants benefit, jobs are supported, the local economy grows and tax revenues increase. As a former chef and caterer, I know the power of providing people with compassionate culinary care. Working hand in hand with restaurants and community groups across our borough, I see the value of familiar, culturally rich meals to people struggling for normalcy and a sense of home. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much for being here. You mentioned how much the restaurants are hurting. Has the city reached out to you at all about trying to involve the association and your restaurant members in some of these food contracts?
Unfortunately, they have not.
Thank you. That's my question. All right. If there are no more questions, thank you to both of you. And I will call the next panelists, which are going to be online on our Zoom. I believe we have Akram Nasir, Michael Lopez, Anna Cabrera and
I believe we have Akram Nasir, Michael Lopez, Ana Cabrera, and Shaita Watt Shuntan.
You may begin.
All right. I'm not seeing any of those panelists online. In that case, I will call Elena Barcenas and Daniel Dorado.
Yes, this is Elena Barcenas. And can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank all of you for allowing me to speak. My name is, like I said, Elena Barcenas. I am the owner of Trincos Alguadoreño Restaurant in Jamaica, Queens. I have been serving the community for the past 43 years. I am a member also for the First Latino Task Force that the mayor established this year. I have asked many officials to assist me in trying to get a contract. I am currently certified with the M W B E, and I have endlessly worked this whole year to try to get assistance, to have an opportunity. I am located in 149 Jamaica. I'm surrounded by hotels which have now housed migrants as myself. And I have also had the opportunity, working with Mr. Jonathan, and he gave me the opportunity, we actually fed 200, we fed 200 migrants next to my restaurant. And it was the first time that they were able to sit down and have a family meal. And I have endlessly heard how many people have received the food from these big corporations, and the food, the quality of food is terrible. I have always asked, I have always asked for the opportunity. I love what I do, I'm good at what I do. And as of now, I have not heard from anybody back. I've written numerous emails and asking, pretty much begging for the opportunity to keep my doors open. And I am an icon for the community, I belong to different organizations, and I just need assistance. And I would appreciate if someone can really hear, like, small businesses like myself, we are struggling, and it's very hard, and it's very hard to compete. I have been, I was, I was actually asked for a bid from one of these companies, but they wanted me to feed three meals for $8. And it's impossible. Even though I needed the money, I did the best I could to come down with the numbers, and it's impossible for anyone to feed and to give what people deserve for only being offered $8 for three meals, including delivery and so forth. So I would like to thank you for this opportunity, and I hope my voice can be heard as a representative of minority women business owners. Thank you so much.
All right, and do we have Daniel Dorado online?
Yes, hi, my name is Jaclyn Tanny, and I am the President of the migrant kitchen initiative. And today I'm going to represent our organization, including our founder, Dan Dorado. Thank you so much for having me here today. And a special thank you to Councilperson Julie Menon for extending the invitation for us to participate, and to Chairs Juan and Parias, and Members Lee, Ariola, Nurse, and Gennaro, we so appreciate it. The migrant kitchen initiative is dedicated to ending the hunger crisis in New York City by reducing food insecurity at the community level. We provide free meals to New Yorkers in need, working with small businesses across the city, and ensuring that all meals are culturally relevant and served with dignity and with respect. Our menus are composed with the recipients in mind, and they meet the culinary interests of those communities that we're serving. We started because we were birthed out of a need to feed the most vulnerable among our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we started as a small group of restaurant industry friends wanting to make the most out of our time and our food reserve when the city shut down. And so it began as small meals for friends and family, and we quickly grew to New York's largest restaurant-quality cooking operation during the pandemic, serving 10,000 meals a day to food insecure communities across the city. And as the hunger crisis continued to worsen, it became really clear to us that services like ours, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, were needed now more than ever. And the food access has really evolved since the pandemic. We've donated 3.7 million meals to date, but we see that food insecurity is hitting particularly hard, as you've been talking about today, to migrant communities. So we partner with organizations to provide daily quality meals. The meals are chef-crafted, they're made from scratch using fresh seasonal ingredients. And we approach every menu the same way that our colleagues who spoke today in the restaurant industry that they do, through taste, presentation, quality sourcing. And we really understand as a nonprofit that hunger across migrant communities often goes unnoticed. Those people are suffering, they're often feeling unseen, unspoken for, and that isolation and fear have really been the reality for our migrant neighbors, especially among the asylum seekers here. We want to be here today to testify that nourishing, delicious meals have never been more important, but they also need to be representative. Migrants face difficulties with access and affordability, and with the isolation, they don't often know where their next meal will come from. And that's inclusive of those asylum seekers in the shelter, but also migrants that are in the communities across the five boroughs, not in the shelter system as well. And so we want to be sure to together tackle food insecurity and reduce the number of both physical and mental health catastrophes that are a result of the hunger crisis there. We really believe there's an equitable way to do this, and by not only incorporating the fresh seasonal ingredients, but more specifically culturally relevant flavors in our meal design, that is very possible. And we love to do that by partnering with the small businesses, reinvesting in the local economy, and really working with the small businesses that identify with the cultural representation of the communities that we're serving. And we do this also while following good food purchasing standards and Executive Order 8.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your testimony. All right, if there are no other questions, I will call up our next panelist. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I now have Andrew Riggi on the Zoom.
You may begin.
Thank you. Hello, Chair, Councilmembers. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I actually just ran out of a meeting to log in to speak because this is very important to us. My name's Andrew Riggi. I am the Executive Director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance. We are a trade association that represents restaurants, bars, and nightclubs across the five boroughs, and I wanted to speak on the importance of prioritizing small businesses in the city's procurement process. You know, we always knew this was important pre-pandemic. I think we really saw the importance of the city working with local restaurants during the pandemic, and we see it today, feeding asylum seekers and others seeking food relief. Certainly, the city can work with larger organizations to provide these meals, but there is something that is so critically important when the city works directly with local restaurants or intermediary nonprofit organizations to provide those meals to restaurants or to those that, meals from restaurants to those that are in need. I'm sure you've heard it over and over again today that it not only brings food to the folks who are in need, but it also supports these small businesses, supports jobs, it also provides culturally relevant and meals to these folks. So it has such a greater impact in this whole ecosystem than just feeding the folks that need the food. We've been fortunate to work with great nonprofits like Rethink Food that does just that, and really has worked with local restaurants, many of them are members, providing these culturally sensitive meals to folks in need when there is an emergency or just on an ongoing basis. So we wanted to come and commit our support to this process and let members of the council know how important it is for these organizations and our local restaurants to be part of the procurement process in so much of the work that you do. We're so committed to this, we actually established the Hospitality Alliance Impact Foundation, a charitable organization, to help amplify the great work that folks are doing. And I think I just saw the migrant kitchen speak there, another example of great work that's happening there, you know, on the ground that we're trying to support through our Impact Foundation. We've worked with organizations like Queens Together, who may have spoken earlier today by providing grants so they can purchase food from the restaurants to have them delivered to those in need. And I think in today's world where people are always yelling at each other and fighting about different things, I've seen the unity that occurs amongst all different types of people in local restaurants, community groups, and folks in need come together and put aside any differences to meet, you know, this end. So this is really a win-win for all of us.
Your time has expired.
Recently, oh, I don't know if I'm muted, but am I muted?
No, you know, we can still hear you.
Great. The last thing I'll just say, thank you. We recently worked in partnership with the Fund for Public Housing to give dedicated credit cards that can only be used at local restaurants to people living in NYSHA that did not have cooking gas during the holidays. And this is another creative way to empower people, support their local businesses while purchasing the meals that they want that are appropriate for them. And again, helps our whole social and economic ecosystem and food relief. So again, big proponents of everything the council is doing and trying to do along here, and we're happy to support in any way possible. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you very much. And I have one other person who's signed up virtually. I'm not sure if she's available online, Susan Marciona. All right. And then one additional panelist in person, Frank Garcia.
All right, you can begin when ready.
First, I want to thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of the New York State Coalition of Hispanic Chambers, 100,000 members, 26 chambers, and Chairman of the National Association of Latino State Chambers. I saw this on TV, I ran from 14th Street to come here because I did not know about this, and this has been something that, you know, Councilwoman, I've been very vocal with Commissioner Kim, and we did a big event, thanks to the Councilwoman in LaGuardia College, the first minority international event done in LaGuardia College to bring suppliers from Latin America, women that were victims of the FARC and other victims, for the first time mayors and governors from Colombia came to LaGuardia College to help deal with this immigration crisis. And we were able to get members, like the Latino Restaurant Association that just spoke that Hawaii represent, to be able to get them to be able to buy together to bring down the cost. I heard people were saying on the other panel with the restaurants, the issue is that they can't come together to buy. We've created, thanks to Coca-Cola, a buying organization to help eliminate the costs to our members, and most important, create jobs for people not to come from Latin America and to stay. Right now, we have a commitment from the Vice President of Colombia, who's here today in the UN, to work with us, with Commissioner Kim, to create a task force to be able to create jobs for people not to come here. But we need our members to qualify more for the contracts with the city of food. It's like, to me, our members, the President of the Latino Restaurant Association, I saw her outside, she's very frustrated because her members get certified and they're not getting opportunities to bid. I think especially in areas like Jackson Heights, areas, we have Colombian restaurants that's in the Councilwoman's district and Long Island City that are not certified. What is the city of New York doing to reach out more to my members to get certified? And why we as chambers of commerce, Hispanic, and minority counterparts are not being known when these hearings are going on? Because it's important for us to have a voice. That's why I saw it on TV, I ran here. Because we need to make sure my members are part of these 10, $30 million contracts that all these big companies like US Foods are involved and our members don't. And these programs, and my, to me, it's like certification. It's not a privilege, it's our right. And when we're having issues with people getting certified, I did an event in LaGuardia College, and the city didn't want to send anybody to help with certification. I had 300 Latino businesses, Asian, Hispanics, ready to get certified, and no one showed up. So those are the frustration that we have as advocates, and I look forward to the city council, working with my chamber presidents to really help get more contracts, especially with this immigration issue. And we will be releasing a white paper that the mayors, with Commissioner Kim's office, and solutions for the immigration crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And that concludes our hearing today, so we will close the hearing.